Good evening everyone and welcome to the June 17, 2025 Board Meeting of the Halton District School Board. I would like to extend a special welcome to our guests both in person and online. We will start with the roll call. Vice Chair Oliver. Good evening everyone. Trustee Ahmed. Trustee Amos.
I am here.
Trustee Baxter.
Good evening.
And trustee Ahmed just joined us.
Good evening Kim.
Trustee Bryden.
I'm here, thank you.
Trustee Daniele. Yep. Trustee Gray.
Here, thank you.
Trustee Horn.
Good evening.
Trustee Rocha.
Good evening.
Trustee Zhang.
Good evening.
Student trustee Ho.
Good evening.
And student trustee O Chu.
Good evening.
And trustee Daniele. And trustee Daniele.
Thank you, I'm here.
Director Ennis, would you please let us know which staff are in attendance this evening?
Thank you, Chair Collard. Good evening, everyone. We have a full complement of staff here this evening to support the meeting.
Thank you. Tonight, student trustee O Chu will be honoring the land.
Thank you. We begin by acknowledging the land and our responsibility to care for and respect all that provides us with life. This land upon which HDSB is situated is on the ancestral treaty and title lands of the Anishinaabe, Ojibwe, Michoacan Nation, now known as the Mississaugas of the Credit. Michoacan Territory in the past and present continues to host both indigenous and non-indigenous peoples. The HDSB is committed to continuous knowledge building with respect to actions that address and resolve the ongoing impacts of colonialism. We do this by learning and understanding the true history, treaty obligations, duties, and responsibilities and indigenous rights, all actively maintaining mutually beneficial relationships and collectively respecting and caring for the land.
Since this is a special board meeting, there are no opportunities to adjust the agenda. We are now up to item 1.3, approval of the agenda. Trustee Daniele, would you make a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, I will.
Trustee Ahmed, would you like to second this motion?
Yes, I would, please.
Are there any objections to approving the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. We're now up to item 2.0. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest for this evening's agenda? Seeing now, seeing none, we are now up to 3.0, delegations' presentations to the board, and I will pass the gavel to trustees Gray and Horn, the co-chairs of the Inspire Awards, to preside over this evening's awards.
Thank you, Chair Collard. Good evening, everyone. It's so wonderful to see such a full house tonight. So as you are all aware, each month, the HDSB Board of Trustees takes a moment at the beginning of our board meeting, usually only the first one of the month, but because there's so many for June, we've done it twice, to honor those unsung heroes who give so much back to the HDSB. And tonight, as you can see from the people in our gallery, we have a full house. We have 14 awards to celebrate those who make a difference, whether through kindness, leadership, or unwavering dedication. Now, the list that's on the agenda is not how I'm going to read them, because I've had to be a bit creative, because what I'm doing is I'm going to do it by trustee. So we're going to start with the award that's going to be given out by our chair, Collard, and that is to, whoops, Kylie Bunda, who is from Frontenac Public School. So if I can ask Kylie to come to the front, and if anybody wants to come up to get a bit closer to take pictures, you are more than welcome. So welcome, Kylie. I'm going to read to you what you have been nominated for. So Kylie, your students see you as an incredibly supportive and inspiring educator, whose impact on students has been profound and heartwarming. Your unwavering encouragement and joyful presence have helped your students build confidence, embrace daily routines, and make meaningful progress in ways that once felt uncertain. From celebrating every achievement... Sorry. To incorporating family details in artwork, Kylie has been able to ensure that students feel seen, valued, and motivated to grow. Kylie, your positivity, high energy, and genuine care extend beyond the classroom, creating a ripple effect that lifts up everyone around you. The empowering environment that you create is a gift, and your dedication is truly life-changing. Kylie, congratulations. Next up, we're going to move to awards given out by our vice chair, Joanna Oliver, and we are going to start with Natalie De Elia from Captain R. Wilson Public School. Natalie, if you have any fans who want to take pictures, ask them to come up too, so they can get a better view. Natalie, you have been seen as an exceptional French teacher and compassionate leader, whose dedication to success, well-being, and inclusion has left a lasting impact on the Captain R. Wilson School community. You have led the anti-bullying awareness and prevention team with empathy and creativity, organizing meaningful school-wide events like Pink Shirt Day and kindness-focused assemblies that promote respect and connection. Your calming presence, humility, and commitment to uplifting others have inspired both colleagues and students, shaping a school culture rooted in kindness, respect, and authentic leadership. Congratulations, Natalie. Don't go away, Joanna, because next up, we have Julie Kelly from Abbey Park High School. Julie, you have been seen as a committed, inspirational, and enthusiastic teacher who goes above and beyond to help students feel safe, happy, and excited to learn. You are passionate about the environment, taking part in Abbey Park's environmental council and setting a good example for your students by biking every day to school. You inspire both students and colleagues alike with your positive attitude and selflessness. Congratulations, Julie. Thank you. We're going to shift back to Captain R. Wilson Public School, where we have Megan Rowe. Megan, as a grade eight teacher and mental health and well-being lead, you have consistently gone above and beyond classroom teaching to support the success and well-being of your students and the staff at your school. You actively participate in ongoing professional development to deepen your understanding of how to support youth with emotional regulation and mental wellness. And you generously share this learning with the entire school by regularly presenting at staff meetings. Your leadership extends beyond the co-leading the Mental Health Matters Club, which organizes monthly virtual mindfulness assemblies, and your actions go far beyond what's expected of your role, and you approach this all with humility and care. From your dedications, students feel more equipped to handle their feelings, and staff are empowered to lead with empathy. The ripple effect of your commitment to well-being is felt throughout the building every day. Megan, congratulations. Next up, we will move to awards presented by trustee Rocha, and we will start with Aiden Pinto from Iroquois Ridge High School. Come on up, Aiden. Aiden, your passion for ethical technology use and personal education inspires both student and staff as you consistently demonstrate initiative far exceeding what is expected of a high school student. As president of Hack the Ridge for both 2024 and 2025, you have successfully organized one of the largest high school hackathons in the GTA. In addition, Aiden, you have co-founded and led Iroquois Ridge's AI, where you educate fellow students in the ethical and effective use of generative AI. Your leadership has cultivated new interests in computing among beginner programmers at Hack the Ridge and among peers at Iroquois Ridge AI. Beyond your own school, you have represented the student voice as an AI fellow at HDSB conferences and in the I Think AI Challenge. Aiden, your initiatives have already created ripple effects that will benefit students for years to come. In every sense, you exemplify what it means to go above and beyond to inspire others and leave a lasting impact. Aiden, congratulations. Okay, next up, we have Caitlin Maloney from Joshua Creek Public School. Caitlin, you have gone above and beyond to create a safe and inclusive classroom for your grade seven students. You foster a spirit of collaboration, always willing to share resources, ideas, and strategies that benefit all learners. As an active member of the school's Equity Team and GSA, you create safe, inclusive spaces where all students feel seen, valued, and supported. Caitlin, you have inspired your students to be the best version of themselves, and in turn, inspired others around them. Your approachive and supportive presence motivate your students to take initiative, get involved, and advocate for themselves as well as others. Whether you are leading a club, coaching a team, or helping with school-wide initiatives, you consistently model professionalism, compassion, and enthusiasm. Caitlin, your actions are a testament to what dedication and compassionate teaching look like. Congratulations. All right, next we have Shelley Goche from Folgerwood Primary School. Public school, sorry. Primary, public. Shelley, you have been seen as a kind and caring educator who consistently goes above and beyond to ensure that every student feels included. You have worked hard to make sure students' financial situations doesn't limit their ability to participate in school activities. Your dedication and compassion have inspired students to work hard and to feel more connected to school. Since joining Folgerwood Public School, you have helped to create a more welcoming and supportive environment, setting an example for others through your actions and approach to student well-being. Congratulations, Shelley. Thank you, trustee Rocha. Next up, we have trustee Zhang, who's going to present awards from his area, and we are going to start with Tara Cochran from Alton Village Public School. All right. If you look up above and beyond, you will surely find a photo of Tara Cochran. Tirelessly dedicated, you have poured your heart, time, and creativity into every school event you lead, from dance-athons to charitable fundraisers, always raising the bar and leaving a lasting impact on students. Your contagious enthusiasm turns fun into purpose, empowering students to lead, give back, and engage meaningfully with their community. Your compassion is evident in every initiative, such as the Burlington Food Bank fundraiser, where you connected hundreds of students with a powerful cause. Even as your own children prepare to graduate, you have continued to mentor new volunteers, ensuring that your legacy of community spirit and generosity thrives at Alton Village. Your leadership has not only shaped countless joyful school memories, but also inspired a generation of students to become caring, civil-minded citizens. Congratulations. Okay, next, we're going to go up to Milton, and trustee Daniele is going to present the awards on behalf of trustee Ahmed, as he is attending virtually tonight. And we're going to start with Melinda Bencieri from Cedar Ridge Public School. Melinda, you have been seen as a compassionate and dedicated educator who builds authentic relationships with students and staff alike. This year, you have gone above and beyond to support a student in your class, fostering connection, collaboration, and a calm space for growth. As a reflective and inspiring member of Cedar Ridge Public School, you lead with grace, challenge norms, and prioritize student well-being. Your love for the art shines through in school-wide events that uplift the community, and your warm, genuine presence makes everyone feel seen and valued. Melinda, congratulations. All right, next up from Milton is Adam Bonin from Elsie McGill Secondary School. Adam, you are a calm, kind, and deeply committed educator whose thoughtful approach makes every student feel supported and valued. You go above and beyond daily to build meaningful relationships, create a respective and inclusive classroom where your students' needs are prioritized. Whether it's opening your shop at lunch, mentoring students in project-based co-op work, or teaching a student to ride a bike, you have consistently shown up for others with patience and dedication. Your leadership in skilled trade education, including your work on Green Hut projects, reflects your passion for hands-on learning and student empowerment. Adam, your humility, self-reflection, and tireless effort makes you an inspiring role model and an invaluable member of the school community. Congratulations. Okay, next up, we have Amanda Hogan from Boyne Public School. Amanda, you are a kind teacher who transform your classroom into a space of safety, joy, and belonging. You lead with kindness and intention, making sure that every student feels supported, seen, and valued, not just academically, but as a whole person. This year, you have gone out of your way to help one of your grade three students build connections with peers and feel a genuine sense build connections with peers and feel a genuine sense of belonging in class. Your commitment to inclusion is more than words. It is how you build trust, how you encourage independence, and how you create a supportive community in your classroom. Amanda, your impact is lasting, shaping how students see themselves and their ability to thrive in school and beyond. Congratulations. Okay, next up, we have a group. So we have the K-17, Sarah Smith and Nicole Venstra. Nicole and Sarah, by creating an inclusive and welcoming classroom, you have improved student lives and have encouraged them to treat one another with empathy, curiosity, and kindness. Your patience, creativity, and ability to celebrate diversity in a way that's meaningful to each child truly deserves to be recognized. These early lessons will ripple forward as your students grow, helping to build a more compassionate school and community. The example that you have set for family and students will leave a lasting mark. You have shown that what's possible when educators lead with their hearts. Congratulations. Next up, Trustee Amos will present her awards to her schools in Oakville, and we'll start with Stephanie Cormier from Dr. David R. Williams Public School. Stephanie, you are a dedicated and compassionate coach and teacher who consistently goes above and beyond for your students. You give your time freely, running early mornings and break-time practices, supporting teams during long tournament days, and offering unwavering encouragement regardless of the outcome of the game. Your words of kindness, genuine care, and emotional support create a strong sense of belonging and confidence among your students. Whether it's checking in during difficult moments, celebrating small wins, or simply offering a smile, your impact is deeply felt. Stephanie, you inspire your students to believe in their selves, pursue their passions, and become not only stronger athletes, but better people. Congratulations, Stephanie. All right, and last but not finally least, we have Taylor Pezak from White Oak Secondary School. Taylor, your commitment extends far beyond the traditional classroom, consistently going above and beyond by not only delivering and creating a tailored curriculum, but also acting as a relentless advocate for your students. Taylor, you have been frequently tasked with creating unique learning experiences for students who may have struggled in conventional settings, requiring an unparalleled level of adaptability, creativity, and empathy. This ensures that all of your students, regardless of their past challenges, can grasp concepts, feel accomplished, and build confidence. Taylor, you have empowered your students to take ownership of their own ideas of expertise, fostering a sense of shared purpose and professional growth that directly translate to enhanced student experiences. Congratulations, Taylor. We have been lucky to celebrate these 14 individuals in person, but there are also some that will be recognized at their schools by their local trustees, and that includes Kristy Billings and Michelle Perry from New Central Public School, Mark Dooley from Elsie McGill Secondary School, and Luke Jorkovich from Abbey Lane Public School. Congratulations to all you inspiring people out there. Know that your work has made a difference. So thank you very much, and please, for everybody watching, don't forget to nominate those outstanding individuals who add to the HDSP community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for co-chairing those awards this evening. It was certainly a full slate and hopefully sends everyone off in the best of spirits for their summer vacation. Student trustees Ochu and Ho, the student trustee report, please go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you, and through you chair. Good evening, staff superintendents and trustees. I'm trustee Ochu.
And I'm trustee Ho.
And today, we'll be bringing you the very last student trustee report, the last board meeting of the 2024 to 2025 school year, the June 17th board meeting.
Before we get started, we wanted to thank the Halton District School Board for being so beyond welcoming to us as student trustees this year and so incredibly dedicated to uplifting students in every way. Through many discussions with fellow students, parents, and staff, we can confidently say that HSB's dedication to hearing student voice is the reason why trustee Ochu and I were able to accomplish all that we have this year. So thank you so much for your support.
To begin, on Wednesday, June 4th, trustee Ho and I chaired the final student senate meeting for the 2024 to 2025 school year. The meeting featured a multitude of items, including the introduction of the new student senate co-chair role, which is only accessible to senators and student trustees that are currently in grade 10 or 11. The role's responsibilities include chairing the student senate, meeting with student trustees and staff advisors to ensure that senate activities go smoothly, and checking in with senators to ensure that their voices are heard at every board meeting and throughout the senate. The meeting also featured the HSB Student Sustainability Leadership Awards, where eco-clubs all across HSB were recognized for their contributions. There were so many incredible initiatives that students worked towards, and some schools even earned the Platinum Certification from Eco Schools Canada. At the senator's request, the June 4th student senate meeting featured a dance-a-thon that got senators busting a move on the dance floor. Trustee Ho and I felt that a fun activity chosen by the senators would be a great way to cap off an incredible school year full of dedication, passion, and hard work. An activity thought of by trustee Ho was a paper airplane activity, where senators wrote kind messages and a piece of advice on a piece of paper. They would then fold that paper into an airplane, and with the senators all standing in a circle, withdraw those airplanes, pick up a random airplane on the floor, and read the kind message inside to hopefully give them a warm fuzzy.
And finally, finished off the meeting with a year-end review from our HSB student senate subcommittees, where our senators brainstorm aspects that they believe went well this year, what they thought could use improvement, and the various incredible student-led projects started during this year in their subcommittees that they hope to continue for future years. This leads into our work updating the student senate constitution, which is a project we have lined up for the summer and into next school year. We have asked every member of our 30-person senate executive committee to create a term of references for their roles and have also passed an innovated and up-to-date version of the student senate constitution with unanimous consent at our last student senate meeting. We would like to thank our trustee mentors, trustee Oliver and trustee Collard, for helping us with this initiative. It truly could not have been done without you. With the goal of making the senate selection process more fair and equitable to all students, trustee Ochu and I completed a script and will be recording a video for principals and students in assisting them in the yearly senator selection process, outlining what an ideal student senator candidate would look like, as well as providing some guiding principles we hope administrators would keep in mind as we navigate the senator selection process this coming September together.
On Monday, June 15th, trustee Ho and I presented to the HSB Administration Council about the Mental Health Day Initiative that was previously presented at a committee of the whole meeting. We discussed our goals and progress so far, which would be the survey that we sent out to secondary school principals, the Mental Health Day task force that we assembled, and all of those random online meetings that we had throughout the year to make sure the project went smoothly. We asked to the administration council what we could do to make sure that the Mental Health Days will go off without a hitch, and discussions are currently in place.
The Mental Health Day Initiative is a project that trustee Ochu and I have been very passionate about for a long time. As an initiative that I first proposed through research and conversations with my peers more than one year ago when I was first running for the role of student trustee in grade 10, I cannot believe that this initiative has finally been put on the table for extensive consideration. Trustee Ochu and I would like to thank the HSB senior staff for your open-mindedness in listening to our voice and for your support throughout this journey. We look forward to furthering our commitment to de-stigmatizing important conversations surrounding mental health and wellbeing and where this initiative will take us in the future.
To provide a quick review of the past school year's events, we have compiled a short list of the ongoings of the student senate as well as the junior council, which we are very proud to have worked with. We're very proud to have worked with the student senate, the junior council, and we have been very proud to be representing student voice all across the previous school year. The student senate has featured the multi-year strategic plan engagement session, where senators would walk around the room, providing comments and their opinions on each commitment of the multi-year strategic plan for the 2024 to 2028 year. The student senate also featured an HLF fundraising month, where they were given a discussion by HLF CEO Mark Claire, where I would like to highlight the beautiful pink coat story that really warmed the senators' hearts. The student senate also featured the Halton Youth Leadership Symposium Workshops and Planning, where senators were as dedicated as ever to youth leadership within the HSB. On the junior council's part, the junior council also participated in discussions around the multi-year strategic plan and gave their feedback. The junior council also learned about student leadership in the senate, and hopefully next year we'll see some junior council members in the student senate as well. And for our last meeting in the junior council, they learned about environmental leadership and played a fun bird song game, where they imitated birds' calls and had to find their partner who was making the same call.
We are very grateful to have been able to engage in countless conversations with the HSB Indigenous team, learning about what Indigenous advocacy, values, and allyship truly means, and working with the Indigenous team to help our student senate embody the values we have learned with collaboration and reconciliation in mind. Spearheading the creation and operations of the Mental Health Day Task Force, we conducted surveys, surveying all principals across the HSB, and initiating impactful discourse surrounding what steps the board can take to listen to students and address their mental health needs. Finally, through our experience with the Ontario Student Trustee Association, trustee Ochu and I have learned many very important lessons and have been very inspired by our peers from across Ontario, provincial stakeholders in education, and so much more. We're extremely grateful for all the opportunities this year has presented us, and I know that I will be carrying these lessons learned this year into my next term, which I will humbly serve during the 2025 to 2026 school year.
Throughout the 2024 to 2025 school year, trustee Ho and I have had the pleasure of working with incredible groups of dedicated people, including the student senate, the junior council, our trustee mentors, our staff advisors, the mental health task force, the Indigenous education team, the board trustees, and the administration council, and so many more dedicated, talented staff and students. It has truly been an honor to work with these groups throughout the school year. They have been paramount to the progress trustee Ho and I have made with our initiatives, and it is our firm belief that next year will be even more successful for trustee Ho and incoming student trustee Jay Zhu.
Thank you. I believe Vice Chair Oliver would like to say something.
Thank you, through your chair. Caitlin and Charlie, it was truly a pleasure for Chair Collard and I to be your student trustee mentors during the course of your term. You stepped into your roles with great enthusiasm and brought in student voice from the very start. You're able to quickly figure out just how to work together collaboratively, how to bring together students to form a very busy and dedicated student senate, and how to reach out to students to collect their input and recommendations. Caitlin and Charlie, you both did a great job in connecting with staff who had various expertise that the senate required to help guide you and move you to the work of the senate's subcommittees. I know that both Chair Collard and I enjoyed our busy weekly check-ins and always had so many ideas and projects on the go. So it was great getting to know you personally as well. Charlie, we wish you all the very best as you start grade 12. And I hope, we hope, that you will remain engaged with the senate as you bring not only great experience, but also great student perspectives. And Caitlin, we look forward to working with you next year as you begin your second term as student trustee. Congratulations on a great year.
And in addition to the cards being given by the trustees, I also have the honor of giving a token of our appreciation to our student trustees.
Okay, thank you very much to our student trustees on an excellent year, and good luck on your exams. Next on our list is the 3.4 presentations, and we have a presentation from Superintendent McIntosh regarding the Welcome Center.
Good evening. Our team is delighted to bring you an update on our collective efforts over the past year, a year of significant outcomes and lasting impact. The purpose of the presentation is to create awareness of work being undertaken as part of the portfolio and not specifically focused on program evaluation. Evaluation of the program will occur as part of the monitoring report that will be received in the fall.
Evaluation of the program will occur as part of the monitoring report that will be received in the fall. The slides that you see looping in the background highlight the key shifts we've made during this time. You will hear even more about this work directly from the voices of those who foster meaningful connections with families. And of course, from those that we serve. Tonight, I'm joined by System Principal Bida Watts, Youth Settlement Specialist Sahar Said. And two of our incredible students, Jet Pay and Eggy Sillen. George Day wisely said, inclusion is not about bringing people into what already exists. It is making a new space, a better space for everyone. Three thousand seven hundred forty-four. This number reflects the many new community members that we welcome to the HTSB in this past year. In our role of providing service and support to those new and returning to Canada. In a time when people have choices about where they might settle. A significant portion of our population chooses, popu- population chooses to call Halton Region home. Our newcomer community hails from all corners of the globe. With China, Pakistan, the USA and Afghanistan leading the way. They bring with them rich identities, a wealth of social and intellectual capital. Eager to embrace new possibilities. Our newcomers are engineers, lawyers, asylum seekers, caregivers. Educators, translators, refugees, and so often multi- multilingual. Frequently speaking three or more languages. Our families have small and large businesses, both in Canada and abroad. They live in high rises, low rises, single, dual and intergenerational families. And in some cases, multifamily homes. When they arrive, the Welcome Center staff. Along with many of our schools are the first spaces where newcomers encounter the Canadian education system. Creating streamlined, online and in-person access to improve their reception into the system. Is absolutely critical to our ongoing improvement. As students begin to adjust to their new ways of being. Settlement support provides a safe space to strengthen their sense of belonging. And anchor the tools they need to navigate and adapt to this new environment with confidence. Participating in regional activities such as the Arrive and Thrive Conference. International Student Orientations and Local Affinity Spaces. Offer valuable time for social networking and help to foster the empathy. That is vital for deep learning when developing new language skills. At this time, I'll turn it over to System Principal Bida Watts, who will add some further context to our work.
So through analyzing data, reviewing feedback that we continually receive from families and schools. As well as participating in various committees and learning opportunities. We're always working hard to improve that uh initial experience for our newcomer families to the HTSB. I'll share just a few of the things that we did to help improve that experience this year. So one of the things we learned through data is that a growing number of our families are settling in the South Halton area. But initially, we only had a Welcome Center location in Milton. And so uh through their feedback, we realized it's very challenging for many people, especially new to the country who don't necessarily have transportation. Or know their way around right away um to, to make it to Milton. So this year, we were able uh at the beginning of summer to establish our second location in Burlington. And I'm happy to say that it's fully operational uh this year. Families are able to drop in any day of the week to ask questions, to get assistance with the registration. And students are able to come there for their assess, initial assessment as well. Something else that we decided to do in consultation with the School Programs Department. Uh it was initiated last year but took place this year was also to move elementary student assessments into their schools. For many of our young learners, you can imagine grade one or two coming to the Welcome Center. And meeting a stranger and then being, you know, questioned about their background and their lang, you know. Their language proficiency can be very daunting. And so, you know, we realized that decentralizing that to the school where they can meet the people that are going to be building a positive relationship. And supporting them throughout the year would be ideal. And so our elementary assessments have been taking place in their home schools throughout this year. And feedback has shown us that it's been very positive for both the school team and the students and families. Um something else that we decided to do, uh summer is our, as schools wind down and close, summer is actually our busiest time. This is where we see the majority of families move into Halton. With that eager idea of their child starting school on the first day of school. But because we are talking about thousands of people coming, um it was quite challenging to process everyone in a timely manner. So throughout the year, we worked with the IT department to create a registration portal. Specific to the Welcome Center because we are also working not only with IRCC to ensure that um the, the immigration status. Is um is eligible for ministry funding. But there, there's a, there's a lot more to supporting families in terms of language and settlement as well. So um we created this portal, IT obviously did the technology aspect. We, we talked through all of the processes that are required to support families. And we were happy to launch the portal in February of this year. Where it was not a bit, not as busy a time, so that way through each registration, we were able to refine it. And you know, as we uh problem solved and learned and IT helped to improve it. Uh where we have uh great news that this summer it will be fully functional. And uh we're hoping that we will, you know, provide families with a much more streamlined experience. And that most of our students will be at, in school on that first day of school. Um additionally, uh we uh through this process of launching the portal. We wanted to do some uh professional development with our administrative assistants throughout the system. Not only for them to learn how to use the portal from the school end. But we realized in our conversations that there were a few gaps in terms of welcoming families. Once they are at the stage of going to the school. So uh we have been working with them to help to support those areas. Uh such things as supporting communication when there's language barriers. Ensuring that key staff in the school are aware when a family arrives. And that, you know, from the ESL team to administration or uh different uh support personnel. Are giving a, a tour to the, to the family and ensuring that the student knows, you know, where to go on that first day. And then a large part is connecting our families with our youth settlement specialists. Families initially when they are at the Welcome Center, um they are doing their registration and assessment. But our settlement services are actually taking place through the school year in the school itself. So when families are connected with our youth settlement team. Then um they are able to not only get an orientation to the school system. But get referrals to many other services that they may need. Um additionally, uh we have services such as interpretation and cultural brokers that can also. Uh be um requested to further support the students settling into the school. So with that, I will turn it to Sahar, one of our youth settlement specialists on our team. And she'll share a bit more about the experience of some of the families.
Good evening. My name is Sahar Said and I'm a, I'm a youth settlement specialist at the Haltonness School Board. I started in twenty eighteen. I was interviewed and hired by Dean Barnes. Here at the Haltonness School Board, our unanimous goal is to help students and families succeed. And I'm sure everybody in this room can agree with that statement. What would you do if someone looked at you with tears in their eyes and said, you saved my family's life? What does it feel like to truly make a difference? To be the person someone credits for changing their life? In my deeply rewarding li- line of work in settlement field. I've had the honour of hearing those powerful words and more. A mother once told me, every night I prayed my children would live to see the morning. She is the mother of five kids aged eight to twenty-three. They are from Sudan, a country that is historically very politically unstable. In Sudan, they lived a terrible quality of life. One of the children at the age of seven was walking with her mother on the street. And a man on her motorcycle tried to grab her. As you can imagine, it was a very traumatic experience for both the mother and the child. And one that they both vividly remember to this day. In two thousand and eighteen, they fled from Sudan to Egypt and they requested protection from the United Nations. The UN then arranged for them to claim refugee status in Canada and they arrived in twenty nineteen. The family lived in Hamilton with an abusive father. This man used to physically and verbally assault the mother every single day. One night, the mother's sister was visiting them. And she begged the husband to spare his wife from all the abuse. But alas, her efforts were in vain. And the man assaulted her instead. He whipped her with his belt. Causing her to lose eyesight in her left eye. Shortly after that, one night in twenty twenty-three, the mother decided she couldn't take it anymore. And she decided to call the police. She filed a domestic violence case against her husband and fled to Burlington with her children in the middle of the night. In Burlington, they didn't have a place to live. And they were moving from shelter to shelter. At the shelters, they lived under horrible living conditions. They were all crammed in one bedroom with only three beds. They had a shared bathroom with other families. And they only had a microwave for food. I was involved in the family settlement process together with Rock, a mental health crisis nurse. United Way and many other organizations in the community. After many painstaking months of rentless work, many service coordination meetings and many, many conversations. We were able to secure a ha- a home for the family in January of twenty twenty-five. The students were finally able to have more sleeping space, more living space, and were able to finally ask their friends to come over. Mom was super excited to have her own kitchen to cook for her family. Some of the supports and resources we were able to provide the family were activities and sports for the children and for mom. Through the city of Burlington's fee subsidy program. Activities through the YMCA, financial support through the Halton Learning Foundation. Holiday wish baskets through United Oakville. Winter clothing, a new family doctor who speaks Arabic and English classes for mom. I'm proud to share that the family has begun to build a new life here and they are settling in well. The mother is now courageously navigating the difficult path of filing for divorce. A journey that is anything but easy. Though she has been told it may take up to two years to finalize, I would like to recognize the step for what it truly is. A move toward healing, autonomy and hope. Her ultimate goal is simple yet profound, for herself and her children to live in freedom. A basic human right that every person deserves. A few months ago, the mother came to me at the school and told me that I had changed her and her family's life. She shared that I'm the only person she fully trusts. And that she couldn't imagine going through this jour- journey without my support. My eyes brimmed with joyful tears and my heart fluttered with a deep overwhelming sense of purpose. I hope that listening to this family's journey has touched your hearts today as much as stories like. This to story touch my heart every single day of my work. Every day I go to work not knowing whose story I will hear or take part in. Every day brings a new story, one I never expect, but one I step into with purpose and determination. And every day somehow I find a way to make it flourish. I'm grateful to have my position in the HTSB and even more grateful to have had the honour to help so many families. Thank you.
And this is why we call our, what, what is traditionally called settlement work, we call them our youth settlement specialists because. Literally, if you need help with anything, they will know where to refer you and how to find you support. They're an amazing team and I'm so proud to be working with them. Um besides the Welcome Center, uh or under the Welcome Center, we also run our International Student Program. Uh we believe that international students, that this, this program not only provides a wonderful opportunity for international students. To come and experience uh studying in Canada and for many, some come for one semester, some for a year, some for multi-years. With the goal of uh pursuing post-secondary opportunities. But we really think this is an invaluable opportunity for our local students. You know, in a divided world, this is such a wonderful opportunity to build friendships, to build understanding. And to gain that cultural competence. We've been working to further diversify and grow our International Student Program this year. One way is through um trying to uh in, you know, welcome students from more countries from around the world. And we've seen a growth in that area. Additionally, we are looking at providing diversity in programming because we know not all students. Can afford the time away from their own schools uh or to come for an extended period of time. So we've additionally added a short-term program to our International Student Program. Individual students can come for three to four months and uh participate. And then there are processes for them to get validation so that, that the, although they are not earning the credit here. It counts towards their studies back home. We are also, um we've been developing this year our short-term program, much shorter for two to four weeks. For groups of students because this is also a great um demand from, from many different places in the world for them to come. At specific periods uh within the school year, but also in next summer, we will be launching a, a short-term program in the summer of twenty twenty-six. And uh this will give many students who don't have the opportunity to come for that extended time. Still a way to build language acquisition, build friendships with local students. And take part in cultural excursions while they are here. And um and in addition to that, we've found that many teachers internationally are also interested. To come and uh observe and to work with a local teacher for a short period of time. In their own specific uh field of uh teaching and to also have an exchange of ideas in that way. So we are also launching a, a visiting teacher professional development program. And we hope to welcome some international teachers next year as well. So with that, I'll turn it back to Ms. McIntosh.
Thank you, Bida, and thank you, Sahar. As students uh shape their own path, these points of connection ensure rich, quality experiences rooted in kindness. And respect of our unique differences, but ultimately united by our shared humanity. Tonight, we have our students joining us who will share with us exactly how the work that we have done has landed with them. I'll turn it over to Jet and Eggy.
Hello, dear members of the Halton Year Six School Board. My name is Eggy Sillen. I'm a seventeen-year-old international student currently finishing my high school studies at Garth Webb Secondary School. I joined the HTSB through its International Student Program and it's truly been one of the most meaningful chapters of my life. When I first came to Canada, my main goal was to challenge myself academically and open doors to global opportunities. That were inaccessible in my own country. I hope that by immersing myself in a new education system and culture. I could grow both personally and academically. And looking back now, I can confidently say that I achieved far more than I ever expected. Being a part of Garth Webb has helped me thrive in many ways. I've grown not only as a pers- student, but also as a person. From engaging classes as supportive teachers to being a peer tutor and getting involved in school life. I built friendships and gained confidence that I'll carry with me into the future. The hospitality I experienced here made me feel like I truly belonged. Thanks to this program and the support I received, I'm proud to share that I accepted an offer to study engineering at Queen's University this fall. I know that my journey through, my journey through HTSB played a major role in helping me reach this point. Of course, moving to a new country had its challenges, adjusting to a new system, being far from home. But every challenge helped me grow stronger and more independent. I'm incredibly grateful for the experiences, the education and the people I met through this program. And lastly, thank you all for ha- for giving students like me the opportunity to dream big and achieve more. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Jet Pay, and I am a nineteen-year-old student, and right now I'm grade twelve. So I'm studying in Nelson High School, which is, I wear a hoodie today. So, yeah. So this is actually my second year studying in Canada, and it's my second year to speak English properly. And, yeah, so let's talk about the reason why I choose to come to Canada to study. So the mainly reason is I really, really want to improve my English. So I know English is really important in nowadays' world, and my parents really support me too. So they're trying to, like, find a country for me to study English well and practice my independence, and we chose Canada. And this two years has been a really amazing experience for me. So I really want to talk about two parts where I think I got improved. The first part is the relationship with people. So at first, I really, really struggled with speaking English and the lack of confidence to talk to others. And also, we sometimes doesn't really have a same topic with the local student. And I'm the only one international student in my high school, so I don't really have a chance to speak my home language. I have to speak English. And the reason, like, how I solved this problem is trying to join a lot of clubs. At first, I joined several clubs, but gradually I think, oh, I don't really have that much energy to, like, participate in all of them. So I really love saxophone back home, so I joined the school jazz band, the concert band. And I also want to try a sport, so I joined the school frisbee team. And I did really well on that, and I attended several concerts with my band, and I go to the tournament with the frisbee team, and also I attend, like, a culture extravaganza show in my school, and it did really well. I tried my best to talk to my teammates and also my bandmates, and I gradually built a relationship with my, like, just my friend. And it's been really well, and I also really thanks to my E S L teacher, which is my English as a second language teacher, and she gave me a lot of help. And also this year, we have a student coming from Italy as an international student in our school, and she is actually the second international student in our school, and I help her, I introduce her to a lot of my friends, and we build really good relationships. And the second part is learning. So in the beginning, it's a really, really big difference compared to what I learned back in China. We need to write differently. We have the, like, M L A format, and we need to read a whole novels in English, and I need to do presentations. They're all completely different for me, so I need to learn everything. So E S L course is a really, really important course that helped me to improve myself and seek a lot of help from my teachers. And another really big part is, I think, it's really, during the process, it's really helped me to, help me to see, like, how to manage my time, because, you know, everybody knows China has really good study pressure. And from after I'm moving here, I feel like I have a lot of free time, and I don't know how to manage it. And I, through this two years, I just learned how to manage it. And so my marks gradually improved, and I actually received every single major that I applied to university. And right now, I'm going, I'm deciding to go into U F T to study the physical and mathematical science. Yeah, so. Thank you. So all you all really want to say, I'm really thankful for the support and kindness from the International Student Program, and without you guys' help, I wouldn't be where I am today. Thank you.
Thank you to our students. To close, I wanted to provide a final quote from our dear ancestor Maya Angelou. She said, "People will forget what you did, people will forget what you said, but people will always remember how you made them feel." Thank you very much for listening to the presentation this evening.
Are there any questions for our presenters this evening? Trustee Bryden.
Thank you for that excellent presentation. My question is for Superintendent McIntosh. I think I heard you say there were three thousand seven hundred and forty-four, was it students that we enrolled last year or approached the Welcome Center?
Students that we enrolled in the H D S B across the H D S B. That's correct.
I ran the numbers while we were talking. Halton represents less than four percent of Ontario's population. That is more than twelve percent of school-aged immigrants who arrived in Ontario. Not, we don't have last year's data yet, but the year before. That's more than triple the provincial average. So I would then ask Superintendent Nagoy, what resources are provided either federally or provincially to fund both the good work of the Welcome Center that we've just heard so much about, but also the work that has to happen in schools in terms of language supports, in terms of all those other things? Is there any consideration of that overrepresentation of international students arriving, not just international students, but students arriving from other countries in our region?
Thank you for the chair. Thank you for the question, trustee Bryden. So it depends how they're classified. If it's an international student, they pay, they're a fee-paying student. The fee-paying amount is all-encompassing support, so it's not just for the classroom resources and teacher, but it's also for support in terms of E S L support, social worker, et cetera, whatever is necessary. So that is one aspect. If it is a landed immigrant or a refugee with a status, and it is considered a pupil of the board, then it is part of our registration and enrollment, so that trickles through the core education funding. And there's also a table for languages, so E S L or F S L support respectively. So if they are, depending on the country of origin and the year of entry into Canada, then there is a particular schedule for funding that creates an allocation for E S L support, for example. So it really depends on how they're classified for the adults, for the families, because this program is encompassing the entire community, it's not just the student entering our schools, but it's also the parents. There's also a couple of other ministry funding and federal funding for language support skills, et cetera, that are provided through our adult learner component.
Thank you, and my thanks to the presenters as well. All of you did an excellent job.
Okay, seeing no other speakers on the list, thank you very much for your presentation. It was both heartwarming and gut-wrenching at the same time, all the, all of the, all the feels. Congratulations to the students for their success in school this year, and best of luck to you for next year in your academic pursuits and social pursuits. And thank you for working so hard with our students. We really appreciate all that you do. Thank you. So now we will move on to the consent agenda. For receipt this evening, we have the following items: the approved minutes of committee of the whole, April twenty-second, outstanding action items, board report schedule, policy and governance procedure review schedule, and quarterly capital update. Be it resolved that the H D S B receive the information items for June seventeen, twenty twenty-five. Trustee Horn, would you make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I will.
Trustee Zhang, would you second this motion?
I second. Thank you.
Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion? And seeing none, are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Rocha, it didn't show up on my screen, but that's okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so through you, chair, if I could pull the policies and governance procedure review schedule?
Please go ahead.
Yeah, so looking at the report, there are several policies that are overdue for review. It's been several months now. And there are going to be another two policies that are going to be due in September. So what are the chances of us receiving all the overdue plus the September ones at board in September so that we're compliant with our policy framework?
Through the chair, that is, that's a great question. Firstly, I just do want to point out that for, I think about half of the policies that are overdue, reviews are actively in progress, so definitely those can come pretty quickly. They will need to go to committee of the whole first, though, in September, any of the ones that are ready, and then they could come to October. October board would be the soonest that they could come. So for the ones that are not listed as review in progress, that's certainly something that we can take back to staff, ensure their readiness to see if they can be ready for September committee of the whole.
All right, thanks.
Do you have any follow-up? Okay, thank you. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. We are now up to section five, items for ratification action, and we have action items this evening: the striking committee report, report number two five zero seven five submitted by the striking committee, and I'll read the motion. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the membership of the Director's Performance Appraisal Committee for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, to be trustees Bryden, Collard, Gray, and Oliver. Trustee Gray, would you move this motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Vice Chair Oliver, will you second this motion?
I second this motion.
The report is before you. Is there any debate?
Trustee Rocha has attempted to raise her hand. Can you see it?
Yeah, I see it now. It takes me a minute to get to it. I have to, I have to dig down into the, into the layers. Please go ahead, trustee Rocha.
Sorry, I didn't know if it was me or if it was something else. Okay. I haven't raised my hand, so I might have to, okay, let me backtrack. To be on this committee, what is the time commitment required for the committee? And how often does this committee meet?
For this year, because we had the three sixty, there was a larger time commitment. I would say we probably met five times. Most of the meetings were half an hour to forty-five minutes. It was the work in between of reviewing the questionnaires and everything like that for the three sixty, and in reviewing the trustee responses to the director's self-assessment. So I would say it's probably for, for a member of the committee, I would say probably fifteen to twenty hours total, and for the chair is probably thirty hours total. Would you like to add your name?
Yes, if, I do realize you'll have to amend the motion.
That's fine.
If I could add my name to that committee, that would be great.
Okay, we will, we have a motion to amend. Do I have a seconder? Trustee Bryden. We're just going to do this by show of hands. All those in favor of amending the motion? That carries unanimously. And so now the motion includes the name of trustee Rocha. The motion is on the floor. Do we have any other speakers? Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. Actually, along the same line through the chair, I believe that this committee can be a minimum of three and a maximum of?
Seven.
Seven. Right. And, and so is there a chance later, other than tonight, given that we're passing this motion, if somebody should come to realize over the summer that they may be able to commit to this committee? Is there a chance to join this committee later?
That would be at the will of the Board of Trustees, and I see no reason why we wouldn't. But there is legislation in place that says that we have to have this committee formed, so we're doing what the legislation says. We're actually a few weeks behind. So, yeah, I see no reason why we wouldn't be amenable to adding if people wanted to join later. Thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to put the motion. I found the motion, I just need to. You open it? Okay, you go ahead. Open it, please. Thank you. Getting used to the new tech. Please cast your votes. And if you can't vote, if you're in favor, please put your hand up. Thank you. Has everyone voted? Trustee Ahmed, are you still with us? Oh, your hand is up. I see that. Thank you. Yep, that's everyone then. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Now we move on to items for future action, five point two point one, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, draft budget, report two five zero seven six submitted by Superintendent Nagoy. Superintendent Nagoy, would you please speak to your report?
Thank you, Chair Collard. And with me today, we have Jay Chantavong, our Controller of Financial Services as well. So we wanted to present the draft budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and just build on the discussion that we had at the committee of the whole last week. So this is a deficit budget for seven point one million for next year. It is, I just wanted to clarify, I had mentioned on the committee that it's a compliant budget, which is true from a financial requirement, it's within the one percent of the provincial allocation. However, it does require ministry approval under the new regulation. If we have, as a board, if we have a deficit, two years in a row, we are required to either balance the budget a third year or have an in-year deficit elimination plan and require ministries approval. So from that perspective, it's a non-compliant budget until we receive ministry approval. And we do have a number of challenges. So a few highlights for next year: we have a declining enrollment. As trustees will recall, our enrollment is about nine hundred and sixty students lower year over year. It's the second year of declining enrollment. And we do have areas of growth. We're still opening new schools. We are opening one new school next year in North Oakville. So we do have ninety-two elementary schools next year and sixteen secondary schools, and sixty-five thousand two hundred and fifteen students. A number of challenges that we do have with respect to enrollment being the main driver for funding is that that reduces our funding year over year, and we have to ensure that we are rightsizing our supports and programs accordingly. We have made some in-year adjustments for just over nine million and about ninety positions less year over year in order to address the impact of enrollment decline. However, as a result of some funding gaps that we still have with respect to the sick leave, supply cost coverage, the W S I B claim costs increasing, as well as the unfunded statutory benefits, which is the enhancement to the C P P contribution that was federally mandated and remains unfunded, we do have a shortfall in terms of the budget and the funding for next year. So as we work through those challenges in appendix E to the report, you will see an in-year deficit elimination plan for next year. And as a team and as a system, we will work collaboratively to identify reductions in order to eliminate the deficit budget by twenty-six, twenty-seven. And with that, Jay and myself would be happy to take any questions.
Okay, I do see we have a speaker. Trustee Bryden.
Thank you. It may be that I've missed it somewhere in here, but could you remind us what the, this seven million will presumably be coming out of accumulated surplus, what the balance of unrestricted accumulated surplus is that that's being drawn from?
We do have an accumulated surplus of around fifty-eight million dollars.
We do have an accumulated surplus of around fifty-eight million dollars. Please go ahead.
That's all?
That's all, okay.
Setting out what kind of roadmap we have and what we're drawing from?
I, I thought you would be following up, sorry. And I see no other speakers, if there are any other speakers to this item, please put yourself on the list. Remembering that next week, the draft budget will be coming up for a vote, and so if there are any requested changes to the budget, they need to be made now so that the staff can prepare any, any of those changes for next week. And I am seeing no speakers, thank you very much. And I know it has been a difficult calculation, and we always thank you very much for all your hard work in this regard, thank you. We are now up to section 6.0, Communication to the Board, and Item 6.1.1, Student Voices, Student Experiences of Hate, Racism, and Discrimination, Report 25077, submitted by Director Ennis and Dr. Bishaglia. And I just want to preface this item that we know there is considerable public interest in this report. I would like to acknowledge that hate and discrimination have plagued humanity for thousands of years. The HDSB is not immune to this global blight. We have taken measures and continue to take measures to ensure all students and staff feel safe, welcome, and able to learn and work in an equitable and diverse environment. While the information in this report is disturbing, please bear in mind that there are several recommendations contained in the report which are designed to ensure improved student and staff experiences. The times shown on the agenda are guidelines only, meant to ensure that our agendas are not too lengthy. Quite often, some items take less time than proposed and other items take more, this is to be expected. My general rule as chair has been to be flexible with time, ensuring that all trustees have an opportunity to speak on each item at least once. It is my preference to give as much latitude as possible in this regard while ensuring the discussion is progressing and not moving in circles. Information items do not have motions attached, and thus there are usually fewer trustees wishing to speak. In the case of this report, we anticipate more interest in wishing to speak. Thirty minutes might not seem like a long time, but it's quite easy for a trustee to ask three or four questions in under a minute. Please be assured, as long as the discussion is flowing, I will continue to allow trustees to speak, even if we go over time on the agenda. Please proceed with your presentation, Dr. Bishaglia.
Good evening and thank you for having me. Today, I am honored to share with you the lived experiences of students across the Halton District School Board, as captured in the Student Voices Report. This report reflects powerful, often painful testimonies from students who face hate, racism, discrimination, and exclusion within their school environments. Their voices are clear, these experiences are not isolated incidents. They are systemic, normalized, and deeply embedded in their daily school life. Across identity groups, whether students are identifying as Black, Indigenous, 2S and LGBTQ+, Muslim, Arab, Palestinian, female identifying, and/or students with disabilities, they describe patterns of being silenced, harassed, and stereotyped. The emotional and psychological toll of these experiences is significant. Students reported feeling unsafe, unseen, and unsupported, but the very system meant to protect and uplift them. Importantly, the report also sheds light on who is impacted. Not just those who are targeted, but also those who witness this harm and recognize its injustice. What follows is a breakdown of nine key themes that emerged from student testimonies, highlighting where change is needed. I'll begin by outlining each theme, and along the way, you'll hear directly from students in their own words. Their testimonies are raw, courageous, and deeply important. Theme one, Pervasiveness and Normalization of hateful, racist, and discriminatory behavior. Students reported that hate, racism, and discrimination are widespread and deeply embedded within the school environment. Of the one thousand one hundred and forty-nine students who responded to the question, "Have you experienced hate, racism, and/or discrimination at an HDSB school?", forty-three percent answered yes. Fifty-seven percent said no or I'm, I'm not sure. However, when one considers whether students have witnessed hate, racism, and/or discrimination, up to sixty-six percent of students reported yes. Many incidents, especially the use of slurs and offensive language, are often perceived as normal or dismissed as just jokes by both peers and at times staff. Students across identity groups reported frequent exposure to racial, homophobic, transphobic, ableist, and gender-based slurs. As some students reflected, some misogynistic and homophobic remarks from mostly male-dominated friend groups are excused as just a joke. Likewise, students speaking about anti-Black racism, anti-Arab racism, anti-Palestinian racism, Islamophobia, and ableism noted, "It feels very normalized in schools, it's seen as just everyday jokes." In addition to verbal harassment, students described experiencing non-verbal forms of racism. This was especially true for Arabic, Palestinian, Muslim, and Asian students, who reported receiving dirty looks, gestures of disgust, disapproving glances, or judgment when speaking their native languages. These gestures often go unnoticed or unaddressed, leaving students to internalize the harm without clear support or recourse. The physicality of these acts, like flinching away or glaring, reinforces the idea that something about their identity is considered undesirable or even threatening. One student explained, "People not understanding Arabs in general, and then you just get dirty looks, or people are judging you, and it's obvious too, or they just look at you weird." This theme illustrates the normalization and invisibility of harm, where both overt slurs and subtle gestures contribute to a school and climate that often leaves racialized and marginalized students feeling unwelcome, scrutinized, or unsafe. Theme two, Silencing and Suppression of Student Voices and Identity. A significant concern, particularly for Palestinian students, was the silencing of their voices and lived experiences. This issue was so pronounced that it was not only raised by Palestinian students, but also by Muslim and Arabic students, who specifically commented on the widespread suppression of Palestinian identity in school settings. Students described encountering barriers when attempting to speak about Palestine, often under the pretext of avoiding controversy. As one student shared, "A teacher once told me that the board's direction were not to say anything about the Palestine-Israel issue." This framing of Palestine as too controversial or too political led to restricted classroom conversations, students being prohibited from presenting about Palestine, and a broader feeling that their identity and lived realities were being erased. One student offered a detailed account. "I took an equity class this past semester, and basically, we had to do a presentation about something that was very important to us, and I chose Palestine. When I started planning it, it had to be approved by the teacher, and then the principal or the school board. My teacher talked to me and basically said that I'm unable to do it. So I went down to my VP and I was telling her everything that was happening, that I wasn't allowed to do this. I ended up being able to do it, but I had limitations. I wasn't allowed to say anything that affected my personal life." Students viewed these restrictions as a clear double standard in how the school community and the board addressed different social justice issues. One student drew a comparison. "Just like how we learn in 10th grade history about the Holocaust, I feel like it's just as important to learn about the history of Palestine and all of the people that were killed and how they were killed." Another student noted, "Even during my equity presentation, I was telling the story about Mohammed, the Palestinian child with Down Syndrome, and his story, and I just began to cry because like I felt no one cared." The sense of invisibility in this regard was echoed by Muslim students who similarly observed that the human rights violations against Palestinians are avoided or ignored in school discourse. One student stated, "Teachers will not even acknowledge the human rights violations against Palestinians due to the so-called controversy." Theme three, Verbal Abuse and Stereotyping. Students were frequently subjected to harmful stereotypes based on their ethnicity, religion, or gender. One recurring example was the description of Arabic, Palestinian, and/or Muslim students as terrorists, a dehumanizing and deeply racist label rooted in Islamophobia and anti-Arab and anti-Palestinian sentiment. This theme was also evident across other identity groups. With respect to anti-Indigenous racism, one student shared, "I have heard people call my friend at school a typical Indigenous person because she had been drinking a lot at a party the previous night." Regarding anti-Black racism, another student noted, "Piers acting like they, other Black students, are going to steal from them." These examples illustrate that verbal abuse and stereotyping are not isolated to any single group. They reflect systemic patterns of discrimination that affect many racialized and marginalized students. Importantly, these testimonies also show that awareness of hate, racism, and discrimination is not limited to those being directly targeted. Students from other identity groups, those who are not the direct targets, also observe and recognize these harms, reinforcing the widespread impact of discriminatory culture within schools. Theme four, Targeting, Harassment, and Exclusion. Students reported being directly targeted, physically threatened, sexually harassed, and socially excluded by peers due to their identities. Reports from students identifying as 2S and LGBTQ+ reveal persistent and targeted harassment, underscoring serious concerns about their safety and inclusion. As stated by one student, "A boy, a grade younger than me, threatened to get me raped and threatened to physically harm me himself, all because he saw a picture of my pride flag." Because of these type of experiences, some students described feeling anxious and unsafe in school spaces, fearing what others might say or do to them. Likewise, students with disabilities reported direct harassment, mockery, and assault. These included verbal abuse and physical interference with mobility aids, such as their canes being taken away and broken, and wheelchairs being touched or tampered with. As students described, "I had to buy two replacement canes as they kept taking and breaking mine and was constantly harassed in the hallways. I am also disabled and ambulatory wheelchair user. I've had students tell me I should have brake lights on my wheelchair and have had students touch and mess with my wheelchair." Muslim, Arabic, and Palestinian students reporting experiencing targeted harassment rooted in Islamophobia, anti-Arab racism, and anti-Palestinian sentiment. These forms of discrimination often intersect, resulting in students being stereotyped, falsely accused, and treated with suspicion based solely on their identity, appearance, or cultural expression. The following examples illustrate how deeply these biases are embedded in peer interactions and how they manifest in both verbal and systemic targeting. For example, with regard to targeted harassment rooted in Islamophobia, a student stated, "I get called a terrorist every single day by a few students." A student who wears the hijab stated, "I've been told that I have a bomb in the back of my hijab." With regard to anti-Arab racism, a student noted, "Since October 7th, anti-Arab racism has changed. Now it's more about accusing Palestinian or Arabs of being terrorists, like the 9/11 narrative." Furthermore, an Arabic but non-Palestinian student expressed, "I am scared that people might associate Palestinians with terrorism due to Hamas, and that this perception might extend to Arabs more broadly." This is one more example of how anti-Palestinian racism negatively impacts the safety and sense of belonging of non-Palestinian students as well. Specifically with regard to anti-Palestinian racism, a student noted that they had been accused by one of their peers who reported them for antisemitic comments, and the student says, "I had never spoken to the student or said such things. It was clear that this was a targeted attempt to get me in trouble and interrogate me for being Palestinian." With regard to misogyny and/or sexism, when commenting on such experiences, students frequently cited sexual harassment, objectification, and sexually-related jokes, ranging from inappropriate comments to touching and assault. As one student stated, "Sexual harassment from boys directed toward girls is very common. I have witnessed multiple incidents where boys have refused to leave girls alone when asked to, and sexist comments are very common. I have heard of multiple students who have committed acts of sexual assault, but either faced very little consequences or none at all." Another student stated, "Boys at my school treat women like objects, asking their friends if they would have sex with them, and asking around about what they've done stuff with their partners. They will spread rumors about girls being sluts and make friends ask them if they did stuff they, they made rumors about." Sexual harassment extends beyond misogyny, revealing deeper intersectional forms of discrimination. For example, one student shared, "I've seen Muslim girls get bullied for not having sex." This highlights how Muslim students face layered harassment rooted not only in gender, but also in assumptions about their sexuality, cultural background, and religious identity. Theme five, Disproportionate Treatment. Palestinian and Black students reported facing disproportionate disciplinary actions, and students with disabilities also reported being disciplined for disability-related behaviors despite having educational support plans. With regard to disability-related discriminations, two students shared, "I would often be suspended for things I did because of my disability. The school board website clearly states behavior as a result of a disability cannot be suspended, but I was still suspended often." Another student stated, "I have high anxiety. If I encounter something that causes me anxiety, I'm told by my teacher that I just have to deal with it or just ignore it." With regard to anti-Black racism, participants reported experiencing systemic inequities in disciplinary practices, with Black students reported, uh, report, uh, being disproportionately disciplined or targeted by teachers and peers. Students expressed the feeling that racial stereotypes place additional psychological and academic burden on Black students, who are more likely to face those punitive consequences. One student noted, "Teachers have been reported for bullying Black students." With regard to anti-Palestinian racism, students reported that their cultural identity and visible symbols, such as the kaffiyah, are frequently mischaracterized or penalized. Students described being alienated by teachers unjustly or Students described being alienated by teachers, unjustly accused, and subjected to increased scrutiny. These experiences create an atmosphere where Palestinian identity and advocacy are treated as inherently threatening or problematic. The following testimonies illustrate the impact of these biases on students' sense of safety and belonging. My teacher decided to say to another student, don't talk about politics to her, me, because it takes her off, but she said it in a jokey way. I noticed that after she found out I did walkouts, she became very distant and cold with me. They were wearing the kaffiyah in class and were sent down to the office and told to take it off, maybe because it seemed like it was disturbing other students. A teacher started calling my necklace a terrorist symbol. A lot of people felt kind of nervous to start wearing anything in support of Palestine because there's an off chance you'll get berated by a teacher over it. Theme six, significant emotional and psychological impact. A recurring theme is the profound emotional and psychological toll these experiences take on students. Many reported feeling unsafe, anxious, uncomfortable, and disrespected in school spaces. They also expressed feelings of alienation, isolation, being unheard, dehumanized, and a sense of deep sadness. For Palestinian students, the ongoing conflict has had significant negative impact on their mental health and ability to focus academically. For example, one student noted, it's been very, very difficult for me to focus in my classrooms because all I've been doing is crying in the room. Students with personal connections to Gaza expressed the feeling of alienation and frustration. For example, my main thing is I had family in Palestine. I had family there and my mom has family there and my dad has family there. My mom passed away actually during October seventh. My family has died there and has been pretty rough for me and I was going through a lot at that time. Students reported feeling that educators dismissed or trivialized their cultural identities, backgrounds, and their harm, leading them to feel deeply hurt and unheard. With regard to NT two S LGBTQ plus hate, students who identify as part of the community reported a deep sense of trauma. Some described the school as a space where they feel unsafe or anxious due to the fear of being targeted based on their identity. With respect, with respect to anti-Asian racism, many students reported a strong emotional and psychological impact, leading to feelings of exclusion, discomfort, and disconnection. Some students stated, being targeted makes me feel uncomfortable and disregarded. It hurts when people mock my culture. It makes me feel disconnected. It makes me feel unsafe. Regarding anti-indigenous racism, the misunderstanding and misinterpretation of indigenous identities led to feelings of alienation for indigenous students. Students expressed that a lack of understanding and respect for indigenous identities, histories, and current realities contribute to these feelings. Additionally, resistance from peers toward learning about indigenous history further intensifies a sense of alienation. With respect to Islamophobia, participants expressed that perceived inequity fosters feelings of distrust in the school system and reinforces marginalization among racialized and minority students. Regarding misogyny and excess and sexism, students described the culture of disrespect and hostility towards girls and women. When sexist behaviors um are normalized and dismissed as just a joke, they felt that being subjected to misogynistic comments has led them to feel demeaned or dismissed based on their gender identity. Theme seven, perceived staff bias and lack of competency. Students reported instances where educators appeared to demonstrate bias, sometimes siding with more socially dominant groups, particularly white students. There was a perceived lack of sensitivity and awareness amongst educators, which led to a misinterpretation of students' experiences and a failure to fully grasp the gravity of situations. Some students even reported that educators themselves were perpetrators or enablers of racist or discriminatory behavior. With regard to anti-Arab racism, a student noted, many teachers, being mostly white, don't quite understand the magnitude of what is going on because they haven't experienced these types of microaggressions. With regard to anti-Asian racism, a student offered an example when as a result of a student being late, a supply teacher asked the student, how long have you lived in Canada? Assuming that being late somehow was related to their ethnicity. With regard to anti-Palestinian racism, a student noted, my teacher said that when I was able to do my presentation, she wasn't allowed to give her opinion on it because she was told by the board that she basically wasn't allowed to have an opinion. She explained that everyone is allowed to speak about antisemitism or the war in Russia and Ukraine, and her opinions would have been allowed on those topics, but for this, it was silenced, even in the law class. With regard to disability, a student noted, when I miss parts of instructions because I can't keep up with my teachers, I'm always met with, you should have been paying attention. Another student noted, I have high anxiety, um, actually, I think I already mentioned this one quote. So I'll skip to um theme number eight, ineffective staff responses. So I just wanted to know that before discussing these findings, uh there was a typo that was noted in the report on page sixty-seven and that will be corrected and the report refreshed. But with regard to um staff responses, across all forms of hate, racism, and discrimination, students consistently rated staff responses as very ineffective or ineffective. And this ranged from fifty-two percent to eighty percent of students, um depending on the identity group. While a smaller percentage found staff responses as very effective or effective, and this ranges between eight to twenty-five percent, a significant portion across hate categories also reported being unsure, ranging between four percent to thirty-three percent. So this reveals a pervasive student perception of dissatisfaction or lack of clarity regarding how incidents of hate, racism, and discrimination are addressed within the school environments. When asked why responses were seen as very ineffective or affect ineffective, students listed two main reasons. The first reason was lack of action. Students frequently reported that staff ignored incidents or failed to intervene unless the behavior escalated to physical levels. As one student stated, the response from educators and staff is ineffective because it consistently overlooks discussions of Islamophobia, anti-Arab, and anti-Palestinian racism. With regard to disability discrimination, a student um shared, I have yet to see a staff member help me whenever I report this. They say that they will deal with the situation, but nothing ever happens. With regard to misogyny or sexism, students observed the consistent lack of intervention and awareness from school staff regarding misogynistic behavior. One student reported, literally nothing, they brush it off. The second reason students gave for rating staff response as ineffective includes their perceptions that interventions are superficial at best. Students described staff interventions as minimal, short-lived, or ineffective, and these included private warnings, brief conversations, or symbolic gestures that did not lead to meaningful change or accountability. Suspensions were often seen as rare or not as meaningful determinant. Despite the overall negative perception, students consistently acknowledged individual educators who demonstrated genuine care, took proactive steps to intervene, educated others, or create a safe space. However, these positive efforts were often seen as by students as isolated than rather than a part of a consistence, consistent system-wide approach. Positive examples uh include the following for the two S H L B LGBTQ plus community. Some students noted individual educators who generally cared and were willing to take action if students reached out. One student stated, because they do care about their students, if you speak up to them about it, they will do something about it. With regard to anti-indigenous racism, a student highlighted a teacher who, rather than shutting down racist comments, educated students as to why what they had said was harmful, which the student found more effective. With regard to anti-Palestinian racism, some students described the staff actively supporting student voice, particularly Muslim and Palestinian students, creating safe space for identity affirmation. With regard to disability discrimination, some students mentioned educators who intervened meaningfully by educating others or standing again up against discriminatory behavior. With regard to misogyny and/or sexism, um students reported positive experiences with administrators, teachers, and other support staff, who they describe as very supportive about women empowerment. The last theme, theme number nine, calls for education and systemic change. Students frequently expressed a strong desire for more comprehensive education on topics related to identity, history, and anti-racism. They emphasized the need for sustained and embedded learning that, rather than superficial presentations or one-off or um offerings. For example, for the uh two S LGBTQ plus community, a student noted, I feel that most straight teenagers aren't properly educated on these topics and are still wrapped in this heteronormative blanket. With regard to anti-indigenous racism, students noted, it's crucial that schools make more effort to reflect and celebrate indigenous history and perspectives in a meaningful way. I know that some people in my school engage in anti-indigenous racism because they think that indigenous education is too shut down our throats, and people complain about having to learn about indigenous history. So in closing, um in summary, these themes highlight the urgent need for deeper, ongoing education and systemic change to create safer, more inclusive school environments for every student. I now invite Director Ennis to share his closing remarks and outline the next steps with regard to um this work and how to respond to these testimonies. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bisavia. Um firstly, let me say to all of our students who participated in the survey and in the research that we're deeply sorry for the experiences that you've had. Um to all of our students who experienced harm, uh we're sorry for that. Uh this is not what we expect of our schools and our our board atmospheres. And certainly, it is hurtful to us to know that this is the voices of our students. It's deeply painful to listen to and hear what our students are experiencing each and every day. Uh we do pride ourselves on our great achievement, on our multiple successes, of so many things that we do well. And yet, in the midst of the great stories that we tell are the painful stories that we are receiving uh tonight. So coupled with the reports we received tonight, along with the report that we received earlier on antisemitism, I want to just apologize to all our students and our families uh for the deep hurt and the harm that you've experienced. So moving forward, we need to make sure that we are, we are, excuse me, um working with our equity and human rights team to enhance our collaboration. We have deeply engaged them in lots of great work and that we're going to continue to do so. We are bringing forward uh an anti-anti-hate protocol um that we've been working on and we're going to make sure that this rolls out for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year to continue to work in addressing these uh forms of hate. Um we're going to deepen and strengthen our work around the discriminatory and harmful language protocol that where we've achieved some success, but clearly not enough. And we're going to expand our identity-affirming learning opportunities, and we have done much of that work uh this year, and we're going to continue to do that as we move forward. And so many of the professional learning opportunities we're going to provide for staff uh will continue to lead by showing uh what human rights position and stance is, along with an inclusive practices. And just ongoing reports on hate, racism, and discrimination, and of course, monitoring how we're doing through our school climate surveys, making sure that we're hearing the voices of students capturing how they're experiencing schools. Because what we want really is for all our students to be in a safe space where they're feeling a true sense of belonging, where their identity is affirmed, and where students are achieving and doing well. And so, um with that, I pass the mic back.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Bishaklia, thank you so much for this comprehensive report, ninety-six pages. Um and this, and I know you had much more than that to sift through in order to winnow it down to ninety-six pages. I'm going to open the floor to questions now and our first speaker will be Vice Chair Oliver, followed by Trustee Rocha.
Uh thank you very much. Um through your chair, I took some notes while I was listening to this. Uh so I'm just gonna read out my uh my thoughts. Um so we know that hate, discrimination, and racism are unfortunately prevalent in our society. And sadly, they all manifest in our schools. And this is not unique to Holton. It was very hard to listen uh to the student testimonies. I know that HDSB is not ignorant of the existence of hate, discrimination, or racism in our schools. And I know that there is a lot of work taking place. But our students do not live in an HDSB bubble and are impacted by what they learn and hear at home and the discriminatory and stereotypical things that they hear from various sources that exist in their daily lives. And so I think it was good to hear uh what our student experiences are and have that documented because I believe all this information will further support the strategies and initiatives that HDSB pursues as we support and engage with the goals and actions of the multi-year strategic plan. And and Director Ennis uh already listed various uh next steps resulting uh from the information gleaned from the study. So I would like to address the concept of safe schools and how important school culture is to students and staff. And we know that our staff are um often uh the very first person to witness or be involved in a, in an act of discrimination or racism, uh the various forms of manifestation. And so they need to be uh well-equipped to be able to respond, and that's not always easy for everybody. And so, uh you know, the results do indicate that some staff are effective at intervening or responding or engaging, uh while others find it difficult to know how to respond or react or intervene. And this was uh stated uh consistently for all forms of hate and discrimination that were explored in in our studies. And so it's a very important issue. Um and so my question pertains to staff training. Um will staff training, specific to each type of hate and discrimination explored in this report, be mandatory across all levels of school leadership, including principals, vice principals, guidance counselors, and equity leads? And how will the effectiveness of this training be assessed? Because we do need to make sure that um our staff at all level are involved in in this training and are well-equipped with the skills to be able to address and stop uh manifestations when they see them. Um and so um I'm just wondering if you would be able to speak to that, Director?
Uh thank you so much, Vice Chair Oliver. Certainly, our approach has been to uh be one of strongly encourage and um motivate staff to take part in the learning opportunities that we offer. And we've seen great uptake in in many and various types of um hate discrimination, anti-hate discrimination training that we do. Um certainly, the severity of the report perhaps asks us to reflect on that. And uh we will certainly um be doing so in the weeks to come as we embrace uh the new year. And in terms of uh just the impact and how we monitor that, I I think, you know, that's something that we will do on an on an ongoing basis through the Have Your Say surveys and uh and making sure that we're and making sure that we're improving and getting greater responses from our students in how they're experiencing schools and see no reduction in these various forms of hate that we, our students are experiencing.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Trustee Rocha.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. So my question does follow, I did want to talk about training for staff in particular. And Director Ennis, I heard you say that training will be offered. So to me, what came out of the report tonight, it's not something that should be offered. This needs to be mandatory, mandatory training. Especially when I heard Dr. Bishaglia talk about how teachers are behaving and staff members are behaving, that's inexcusable. I can understand kids being kids and they say things and they need to be guided in the right direction. But when we're at a school where your primary role is to keep children safe and to teach them to be a better person, even one teacher doing something is inexcusable. So any training that the board decides to implement, it needs to be mandated. This report needs to be shared with staff. Staff need to hear how they're being perceived, both on the good things that they do, but especially where they're lacking in standing up for these students. So. And then I look on the wall and human rights and equity and inclusion and indigenous rights and education have been in our multi-year plan, the last plan for the last four years. They continue to be on the plan because we know it's such an important commitment. And yet, there's still so much room for improvement. So. I guess my ask is that when the equity team takes us away, when the human rights and equity and inclusion team or whatever teams are going to work on this, it's really to look at the impacts that a person's behavior is having on our students and that whatever we do, that we're mandating a way forward for our staff because this can't continue to happen, especially when we've just announced our M Y P for the next four years. And what we're hearing complaints about is stuff that we said that we're going to work on for the next four years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Rocha. We will now move on to Xin Yi, Trustee Zhang.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Oliver and the Trustee Rocha. You both spoke on the training. I think the training is important to conquer the challenges. My comment or question is before we provide implemented the training plan and implemented the trainings, we need to understand the challenges. And in the study, in all the statistical study, actually, there are two type of errors. One is error of inclusion or error of exclusion. That means some cases, they have intersection. And so we should put the case into one category, not inputting the other. Or we, sometime we, because the respondent, they don't understand those concepts. They may respond in a wrong way. So my first question is, in our study, what mechanism has been adopted to reduce these two type of errors? Thank you.
So I can tell you that students have deep understanding and knowledge of human rights, social justice, hate, racism, discrimination. There is absolutely no chance that students misunderstood what they were being asked. The methodology included both focus groups and survey questions. The focus group really allowed us to go deeper into their responses, but the amount of similarities between the survey and the focus group gives me quite great confidence. And just the narratives and the length of responses and the quality of responses, I can tell you, Trustee Zhang, that students had a firm understanding of the concepts of hate, racism and discrimination.
Thank you. And you have used your time. The timer ran out. Thank you. We will now move on to Trustee Ahmed.
Thank you, Chair. Through you. I want to thank Director Ennis, Dr. Bishaglia and all the staff who worked hard in compiling this survey report. I'm speechless, actually. The problem is so, so much deeper. As I said earlier, I'm in favor of addressing all types of hate and racism in our schools. And I don't think that any one race or any one group of people are superior to another. I've been asking for equality for everyone since the beginning of my term. And it pains me when I see people who want their rights to be recognized, who want safety and security for themselves, but they use all their energy to make sure that the rights of others are not recognized or even denied. And I've been saying in the past also, human rights is not a zero-sum game. Recognizing one pain, one group's pain and sufferings, it does not automatically invalidate someone else's pain and sufferings. We are all human beings. We share this world. We all have equal rights. That's what we want to teach our next generation. Having raised four kids through H D S B system, I'm proud of H D S B system. I'm proud of everybody that works for the system. I'm proud of all the teachers. They are human beings. They may have made mistakes, but human beings correct themselves also. And through training and through supervision, I'm pretty sure that we are going to make the system even better than what it is. Our actions speak much louder than our words and have more impact than our words. So let's make our schools a safe place for all our children, for all our students, so that everyone feels that they belong. I will never ask for anyone's right to be taken away or question their rights. Silencing voices that are trying to bring attention to the pain and sufferings of Palestinians is actually anti Palestinian racism. And this form of racism often conflates criticism of Israeli government's policies with antisemitism, effectively erasing Palestinian voices.
Please refrain from making political statements. This is a report on student voice.
Okay, so this is what I was hoping to suggest, that this motion started with anti Palestinian racism, anti Arab racism and Islamophobia and included all kinds of hate and racisms. I would propose teaching Nakba Day at schools so that people, schools, teaching Nakba Day in schools is essential.
Please refrain from making political statements and stick to what's on the report.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. What kind of training are we going to include, Chair? That's what I'm going to, that's what I'm pointing out to. This is not a political statement. This is a historical event that happened to this group. And that's why they are doing what they're doing. They're protesting. They are trying to show their identity. There is a reason for them to do this. And the reason is they've been expelled. These are refugees who are living in Canada, who are living in U S, who are living in Europe. These are the Palestinian refugees. So why are they refugees for last eighty years? We need to ask, this is not political. This is historical. We teach history, right? Don't we teach Holocaust? And I support Holocaust teaching. Similarly, we need to teach Nakba Day. What is Nakba? It only means catastrophe in Arabic.
Thank you very much, Trustee Ahmed. I have to move on to the next speaker now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Danielle Lee.
Thank you very much, through Madam Chair. You know that a lot of my version of governance is defined by trust, but monitor respectfully. And so my question is along those lines. Through you, Madam Chair, to the Director of Education. I was very, very encouraged when you summed up the report with the commitments that you are going to put into place, Director Ennis. I think that is an amazing start. But I also think that the culture of a large organization, like the trajectory of a large ship, it doesn't change automatically. It doesn't change on a dime. It's often a slow and steady change. And I'm really encouraged to see what you're going to do in the next year or two. But my question is, will we be doing another report like this in the antisemitism, looking at all forms of racism within our students in a few years? So we'll be able to see if there are benchmark changes from what we're hearing today, which was comprehensive but horrible to hear. Thank you for doing what you did. I can't imagine that it was very easy, but it was what we needed to know and to hear. So thank you for that. Will we be looking, planning to look three, four, five years to see if we have seen changes from what we're going to put into place as of these? I'm just, I'm looking for that respectful monitoring and wondering if there's a plan for it.
Thank you so much, Trustee Danielle. Certainly, there are a number of ways in which we are able to report back to the Board of Trustees that we're doing the work. One would be through the multi-year strategic plan monitoring reports. One would be through the Have Your Say surveys. Another would be through our census. So all of those various modalities are going to be methodologies by which we, you know, we capture how we're doing in comparison to where we are. And so I hope to, along with Dr. Bishaglia and the research team and the senior team, bring that back to trustees in the years to come.
Thank you. And we will now move on to our next speaker, Student Trustee Ocho.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. I'd like to echo Trustee Danielle's statements about how that was an extremely comprehensive report, but very good to hear, especially for me, because these are my fellow students and it really pains me to hear what they've been saying. But in light of the enhanced implementation of the discriminatory and harmful language protocol, in my experience and from what I've observed, students feel comfortable with harmful language, especially among peers when it's being phrased as a joke. Teachers interact earshot and hear what students are saying about another student in the friend group. But as long as most of the friend group laughs it off as a joke, teachers don't comment or address what students are saying because they might think it's like cool or no one's gotten hurt. So I just want to pose this question of what is the sort of disciplinary action currently being taken against harmful language from students, especially when it's phrased as a joke? Is there like a different sort of set of responses?
Thank you for the question. Now, Trustee Ocho, certainly, harm is not joke. And certainly, the message that, excuse me, that we want to give to schools and we will be giving is that when students are being harmed, it should not be treated as a joke because it's painful and it's hurtful. And so that's where we need to do more work around that. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you. And now we will move on to the next speaker, Student Trustee Ho.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. Yeah, thank you so much for this report. I'm really grateful that it's being shared. I think the common conception at school, or at least how I dealt with racism, expansive and back in elementary school, is like repeating in my head that, you know, this treatment is inevitable, like these jokes are always going to be made and no matter what actions being taken, you know, nothing will change. So I'm really glad that this report has been brought to the table and highlighting what has been going on instead of, you know, hiding it away and only focusing on the positives, just turning the attention to like some of the recommendations in the report. I do believe that it is helpful to see more like representation in like the broader education, such as like the learning opportunities and integrating it like inter-curriculum per se. But I think many times, like the situation is a case-by-case basis and something that needs to be addressed like individually. Like, for example, someone with a racist perspective or someone who learned like from their parents to think in certain ways, they're not going to change how they think or how they act just because, you know, they experienced like a workshop about anti-racism or because they read a book about a different culture or even, you know, after taking a whole course on like another culture, for example, the indigenous course. Like, I feel like within my peers, there was like a bunch of mixed reviews surrounding it. So in terms of this, like I saw there was a lot of talk about like broader education or like learning opportunities, educating students about other students' culture. Like, what are some examples of how we can do that? And how can we ensure that like real education is being offered and like actually retained by these students? And that's not just like something performative or something inefficient or something that's like taught lackluster just because like teachers feel like they have to.
Through you, Chair, I can say that what students find most impactful are genuine conversations that take in the moment when harmful comments or behaviors are exhibited, that are genuine, that are centered in empathy, that correct the harm and educate from a holistic and human and history perspective. So some of those voices certainly are there in the report that, you know, it's not an assembly. It's not a one-time offering. It's when a racist or discriminatory act happens, the educator stops and has a conversation as a collective, as a group, and follows up. So there's efforts to repair the harm, there is follow-up and it becomes part of the classroom culture to work around or to work within a system of humanity, where everyone's humanity is centered. You know, I don't know if this is elusive, but certainly this is what students commented as well, that it's not these performative acts. It's really based in values and demonstrating care for one another. And as Trustee Ahmed was mentioning, it's not a human rights marathon where one human right is more or less important than others. It's not a race. It's really centering and anchoring everyone's humanity and starting from a place of empathy and care and deep concern for one another.
Thank you. We will go on to our next speaker now, Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Dr. Bishaglia. I first wanted to make a comment that I am very proud of our board. It's very courageous to look inside a board and to reveal in a public forum, such as we are here tonight, some of the very hurtful things and harmful things that are happening. But I really believe that we're so courageous to take this on, to listen to students' voice. And I really believe that this board is really no different than any other board in the province. I think this is happening. It's systemic. It's everywhere. But good on this board for saying it's going to stop, we're going to address it and we're going to make commitments, as we have heard tonight, that have been expressed to try and address this as it's happening. I have two questions. My first one, and maybe I'll have to go back on the list, but my first one is regarding the casual and hurtful behaviors that we're hearing, those casual comments or those things. And given that we believe that students understand hate, racism, discrimination and human rights, I ask the question, where in the curriculum is this addressed? And how can we elevate it and so that the understanding of the inappropriateness and harmful nature of casual comments, joking and other types of behaviors, it can be addressed?
Certainly, you know, from a curricular standpoint, you know, the expectation is that in all of our curricular areas, whether it's language, math, social studies, history, geography, you name it, there is an opportunity to have as its foundation the commitments that we have in the multi-year strategic plan. These can be and should be interwoven and integrated through all subject areas as we present, whether it's literature or mathematics or geography or history. All of those provide a vehicle for us to actually address these issues of hate, discrimination and racism. And so it is for our program leads and our equity staff to give our staff the abilities and build their capacity to do so in a way that's effective and that's meaningful. But all of the, remember, the curriculum is the what. In terms of the how, that's where we are able to provide the opportunities to address these through curricular areas.
You can follow up. You have a few seconds left.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll speak quickly. Um my second question was uh that uh the um school boards do not uh situate themselves in isolation. Schools work with students and work with parents in the community. And I wonder how our board is going to engage the parents in our community to be part of the solution with regards to their children. Thank you.
I don't know, Dr. Bichalia. I you spoke directly to students. Did um the topic of parents uh come up at all in the conversation?
Uh parents was not mentioned, uh but to be fair, the the focus groups uh were quite focused, if you will, on the on the questions that were asked. Um but I'll just mention that as as a public sector organization, um we are duty holders from a human rights and equity perspective. So the human rights commissioner uh would remind us that we we are duty holders. Students are in our buildings. Ultimately, it is our mandate, our responsibility, our moral ethical and legal obligation to ensure that they come into spaces that are free of discrimination, hate and racism. And some might actually argue that to uh shift the responsibility even from a shared perspective to parents in the community might be another form of sort of um not taking our responsibilities to the the extent that we need to. I think parents and communities are strongly important voices. Um they can help us to ascertain whether's uh our implementation and our efforts are having the intended impact. But in terms of our mandate through the Ministry of Education and through the Human Rights and Equity uh Secretariat and Human Rights Commission, uh it is our responsibility to ensure that our spaces are free of hate, racism and discrimination.
And if if I may just add, trustee Gray, certainly we have engaged our parent groups and our community groups in doing this good work um over the years. And uh we will continue to do so and in fact strengthen that as we move forward, because there is a need to have that partnership. Um as Dr. Bishaglia said, not to shift responsibility, but as a shared uh responsibility moving forward. And so that's work that we have, we are doing, um but we certainly need to strengthen.
And our next speaker is trustee Bryden.
Thank you. A lot of what I've been thinking has been stated already, and I'll try not to repeat those pieces. Um I'll add a couple of thoughts. One, um I graduated high school twenty-two years ago. I know there's people in this room who graduated longer ago than that. Um and and hate, discrimination and racism are not new phenomena in our schools. Um the yardsticks have moved. In some cases, they've moved in positive directions. Uh in some cases, less so. And what we've heard tonight is they haven't moved far enough. Um and I I like uh trustee Danielli's um analogy of the ship turning and and I'm I am glad to hear that this is, see this process of, okay, whatever direction we've been headed in, there's room to pivot and and make that uh make that move in a more positive direction. Um a couple of technical points. Uh this was a self-select response survey. Um so whatever percentages are attached to our percentages respondents, they're not percentages that represent our board as a whole necessarily. Um so if we, if a similar question goes on to a have your say survey, it is not directly comparable to this survey. Um and so if we're tracking data over time, we really need to be looking at have your say versus have your say and and watching that evolve. Um and and that will be helpful and enlightening as we go. Um I feel like I had another one, but it's not in my head now, and we've got lots of people to speak, so I'll let it go.
Thank you, trustee Bryden. Moving on to uh trustee Horn.
Uh thank you through you chair. So um I'm going to try to be quick because I realize there's lots of people still up here and um I don't want to take too much time. But um I appreciate, I know that trustee Grace spoke about the courage that the board has asked to ask those questions, and I also think we need to recognize the courage that the students had to make their voices heard because for me, and I I think about this, and I think about this in relation to the Inspire Awards that we heard tonight and the Welcome Center discussion that we had, it all seems to swirl all around the same idea. Those are those positive pieces and how we're looking and how we are doing that. But for me, one of the key pieces around why this happens is the fear that exists. So people are afraid, people are afraid to stand up. And I think it's really important that we address that fear. And one of the ways that we address that fear is through education and knowledge. So I know that you're speaking about skills that we need to build within our educators, and I know trustee Ho spoke about the knowledge or the education that we have to have for our students, but I think that is also for our staff. Our staff needs to have that education too, because I I know from having conversations with staff within our schools that they are afraid. They're afraid to say things. So I think it's really important that we enable people to feel courageous enough to stand up for those people who feel unheard and not belonging. So I think it's really important, that whole idea of education so that the, because we're afraid and we don't understand, when we don't know and we don't understand, we're afraid, we're afraid to say things because we don't know that we're right. So I think it's really important that we have that education piece as well. I did have something else to say, but much like trustee Bryden, it's gone right out of my head, so I'm going to go on from there. But again, I just wanted to thank the students and say congratulations and thank you for your courage in speaking up.
Thank you very much, trustee Horn. Now we move on to trustee Jiang, a second time speaker.
Oh, thank you. Uh I want to follow up my uh previous words. So the first I want to say uh the, for the research quality result, um to achieve quality result, uh we need to implement uh a a method to uh to reduce the errors of two types. Also, we need to have a method to validate all the results. So and uh we cannot just rely on respondents, uh the knowledge. That's the first thing. And the second one is, I did my research and from the on uh the Toronto Police Service and other Ontario uh human rights organizations, several organizations, they have the the crim- the discrimination reports. And I found always the top top three is a- antisemitism, uh anti-black and Islamophobia. So antisemitism always on the top, and the the second one, the third one, they are in different order. Um so for and as an organization, when we implement our action plan, we, the resources are always uh limited, and we need to focus on a certain level, certain uh the priority. Um for certain type, we take a priority. And for these, because this report lists many types. So I like to know, uh do we have significance, any significance of type and we need to address first? Or all these types are equally distributed? So this is the second question. The first is just comments, the second is a question, and the third-
We'll go one question at a time.
Okay.
Through you chairs. So as a public uh sector organization, as public education, uh again, we are mandated to support the human rights of every single student who walks into our buildings. We wouldn't engage in an analysis to determine whose human rights are um most importantly to be addressed at any given point. Uh this is, it's public education. We are here to serve every single student from every single community irrespective of our resources. It's not resource contingent, it's public education. If students don't receive discrimination here, the, uh sorry, education here due to discrimination, then where would students receive the education? It's it's upon us to figure out our budgets and our resources in order to ensure that every single student is given the opportunity to learn and to feel safe in our schools.
You can follow up with another question.
Okay, so the the third is, is not questioning, just a comments and recommendation. Um because when we go to the work, go to work, in workplace, we all the colleagues will maintain the work relationship. And at the, to maintain good work relationship, there are two things we we need, we we know we should avoid talking at workplace. One is uh religion, the second one is politics. So this is like a common sense in a lot of companies. We, so uh in school, uh I I don't believe students engage the the teachers to to discuss politics is appropriate behavior. But we don't have such a policy for that, so I will recommend we need to create a policy for that, to make it clear.
Thank you very much, trustee Jiang. We will now move on to second time speaker, um trustee Ahmed.
Thank you, chair. Thank you very much. So yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for, to all the the staff and all the trustees, because this conversation is moving in the right direction, and I'm I'm very happy that we did this. And as uh um trustee Gray said, it's very courageous of our board to to take this head on and uh and acknowledge that there is, there is a problem, and we are willing to to tackle that problem. So thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Ahmed. Moving on to second time speaker, trustee Ho.
Uh thank you through you chair. I also have two questions. I'll go one at a time. Uh firstly though, I wanted to uh note that I really appreciate the anti-hate protocol that uh is being recommended. I think it's a really wonderful idea. I recall um at the beginning of the school year, my teachers pointed to our anti-bullying protocol that have um had like posters within all of my classrooms, and I think it was very beneficial, not only to students uh but also to staff. So I'm really happy that the anti-hate protocol is being implemented to ensure that all staff are able to respond, you know, accordingly to these acts of hate or disrespect. Um however, also from my personal experience, many students, even the ones who may have completed the survey, often suffer in silence and they're scared to tell a teacher, maybe because they don't feel like their teachers will understand, or maybe their teachers will side with the other side. So I was wondering if there are any plans to outline ways staff can be not just like responsive and reactive in the right way, but also like as Charlie was mentioning earlier, being proactive in addressing like what they hear that's not being directly um taken up with them.
Thank you for that, uh trustee Ho. Certainly we believe that we should be proactive and responsive. And uh one of the work ahead is to ensure that we are providing our staff with the capacity that they they need um to be able to respond. One of the things that we know is that staff sometimes feel that they don't have the tools, nor the knowledge, nor the capacity in order to respond effectively. And so that's our job. So the people in this room, the senior team, will be working with our various departments, equity, human rights and inclusion in particular, to make sure that we're doing that great work according to some of the suggestions that trustee Urosa made earlier, uh so that we're better equipped to be more proactive in that response, because I think that would go a long way in mitigating against some of these occurrences.
And you have a second question? Yeah, thank you so much for your response. Um I also want to ask for clarification. Um I remember we talk a lot about staying like non-political or not taking a political stance in the board. Um but I was kind of wondering like where we draw the line and what this means, because I feel like, like, um being non-political and taking a non-political stance regarding global conflicts, that's like one thing, but also just like not talking about politics in the classroom at all is another thing. And listening to many of the testimonials, I hear um a lot of students saying that not being able to speak about like these events that really impact their lives or not being able to talk about politics or share their opinion at all in the classroom, like they associate that with oppression. And again, like I completely understand the value of staying like non-political within the board um for our staff to ensure that no one is being hurt. Um but I would also like to call on maybe like a response or clarification, if you have one, or maybe just some thought for future action to clarify like kind of what trustee um Jiang was kind of saying earlier, like what being non-political really means uh in action. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ho. Uh certainly, that's a big question. Um because uh you know, we we do understand sort of small p politics uh is part of the curriculum in high school. There is politics in high school. Uh and certainly even in the elementary grades, we have our students engage in government and polit- polit- politics and policies. And so um it's the politicization um that is often being referenced and um not trying to, I think the broader message is not trying to create division and not trying to create divide among students uh by being deeply entrenched in one side or another. But uh certainly there's a place for respectful dialogue around politics, because that's that's indeed part of the curriculum.
Thank you, trustee Ho. And now we will go to second time speaker, trustee Oliver.
Uh thank you. I just want to uh share two comments with you. One is to circle back to my earlier question and comment around staff training, uh which uh picks up on student trustee's Ho's uh comments as well. And that is um that I think when we consider staff training, we need to be very intentional and strategic, but also open to creating safe spaces, because we do know that um you know, people come in with their own biases and um their own ideologies and and w- we want to to move them from that space of resistance and challenge and maybe not understanding fully to actually understanding the issue and and being open to learning how to address and and you know, learning some of the taking part in some of the learning that they need to be able to um to uh address um um manifestations of hate, discrimination and racism. And secondly, um when looking at the results in this uh report, I think it's also important to note that um uh in addition to manifestations um of uh hate and discrimination by way of comments and stereotypes, which certainly erode uh students' confidence, sense of safety, mental health and emotional well-being. Um there are students who are also experiencing threats of bodily harm um uh and and are fearing for their life and their uh physical safety, as evidenced by the experiences of the two S L G B T Q two plus um students and those with various disabilities, where the damage uh to their assistive devices poses a serious risk uh to their physical safety. So we we also have that manifestation that we need to address. And so, thank you. And I and I really thank our our students for being so open and for sharing their experiences. Uh it was very difficult to hear uh all of their comments, but I'm glad they shared them, because I believe uh we can work with those and we can make sure that we address them and uh make schools truly a safe space for all students. Thank you.
Thank you, vice chair Oliver. And now moving on to third time speaker, trustee Ahmed.
Sorry, point of order.
Thank you, chair, to you.
Point of order.
Uh yeah, so.
Yes, this item is for information. Trustees are only allowed to speak to four information items twice unless we make a motion to extend debate. I would suggest we move to trustee Oshu, as that would be his second time. And at that time, if we want to extend debate so that trustee Ahmed could speak, we would have to have a motion on the table.
Thank you, and I agree. I will move to trustee Ocho to speak as a second time speaker.
Thank you through you chair. Um from my experiences at school and from what the report says, uh stories about how harmful or hateful language harms others have been effective in quelling like hateful or in harmful language among students. Like a discussion aspect explaining how the behavior is harmful is one of the best ways to remedy the harmful behavior, as students understand why it's harmful and why not, why they shouldn't use it. But considering that a lot of the harmful language emulated by students stems from outside the school environment, is there any way we have that can reach some of the roots of the issue by providing students an aspect of discussion that they can take outside their schools and do at home? Like what's stopping students from learning about harmful language to discussion than having what they learned being eroded during, due to like, due to hate outside their schools that they really can't control? Uh thank you so much, uh trustee Ocho. I certainly, um you know, as I've said previously, uh you know, while we are a microcosm of the larger society and are affected by it, we certainly, and it is my hope, and uh and I think it's all of our hope, uh that we be a uh beacon of hope for for our society uh as a board in 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 leading the way, ensuring how we can be exemplars of what it means to uh truly have an inclusive, safe space while belonging. And so for students to take their learnings and to bring that out outside, it's um perhaps um you know, a a burden to be placed on students. Um but certainly, as they learn more and are- But certainly, as they learn more and are living out their lives in various ways and the various connections that they have, I can certainly see how that, you know, their behaviors, their attitudes, and their understanding will be, you know, permeating through to the people that they come in contact with. And that certainly would be our hope to create a better society.
Thank you. I did have a second question. So, this is very similar to trustee Ho's question, but as religion and politics have been a rather hot topic where a lot of the harmful language is rooted, as the report also says, I believe that healthy language and, I mean, healthy discourse between students regarding religion and politics is a good thing, it's a benefit. But where is the line between healthy discourse around politics or religion and the harmful language that might come with it? Like, how do teachers know when to put a stop to these sort of discussions?
And that is the million dollar question, trustee Ochou. Certainly, it is a professional judgment that teachers use in adjudicating what that, where that line is. And certainly, we, through the opportunities, learning opportunities that we will provide teachers, we're hope that they're equipped enough and have the wisdom to know where that line is and to adjudicate on the side of, you know, making sure that hateful language is not permeating within the discourse. Thank you.
Thank you very much, student trustee Ochou. Now regarding trustee Ahmed's request to speak for a third time. Trustee Ahmed, are, i- is it something that you absolutely need to say? Or is it something that perhaps you could say under trustee comments and questions later?
No, I'll address it later.
Okay.
Thank you, chair.
Thank you very much. And so, that brings our speakers list to an end. And I just want to sum up, and I'm probably going to say a lot of words that other people have said, but I do like to give a bit of a summary after so many have spoken. It does take tremendous amount of courage for our students to speak about their experiences of hate and discrimination. And it's not easy to hear about these experiences. Having said that, I also believe it is vitally important that we do hear them. It is only by taking in their hurt and pain that we can move in a better direction. And I am confident that the H D S B will make the changes necessary to make marked progress in a very short period of time. Thank you. And now I would like to call a five-minute recess to give everyone a chance to stand up and move around.
Thank you. And through the chair, this is the interim report, the third quarter for the current fiscal year. And we just wanted to point out a couple of things. As you'll recall, trustees approved budget of 1.8 million deficit for the current year. As the year unfolded, there were a couple of unexpected increases in costs, namely a heavier winter than expected, so snow removal increased by 1.7 million above what we spent over the last three or four years. And the W S I B claim costs, you've heard me speak about those in terms of one of our budget pressures. We've received updated numbers from our actuaries and they went up about 1.6 million. There were overall changes to revenues and additional savings in year of about 1.2 million. So, all in all, we are looking at the end, right now, the projected year-end position would be 3.9 million. So, that's 2.1 million higher than expected. We did inform the ministry. As you recall, the ministry had approved our 1.8 deficit position and we have since informed them of the, the two additional items. We are waiting on a couple of other revenue streams to be confirmed, whether or not we are able to maintain the balance or whether some of the funding will be pulled back. If we can keep the, the funds, then it would cover this and we would put us back to the original approved budget. And Jay myself would be happy to take any questions.
Okay, I'm looking for speakers on this item. And seeing none, thank you very much for this report and for all of your continued hard work on managing and balancing and operating and capitaling. Thank you. Our next item is 6.1.3, Student Retention, Recruitment, and Growth Committee Update, Report 25079, submitted by Associate Director Salmini. 25079 submitted by Associate Director Salmini. And Associate Director Salmini, would you like to speak to this report?
Yes, well, good evening, everyone. Before you have a report created by staff, there was a committee established in January of this year for the purpose of understanding student retention trends between grade eight and grade nine in the HDSP. And in the report, there's an overview of some of the challenges we face, some of the key actions to date, and some of the strategies that we've planned in five key areas for next school year and beyond: academic programs, social media branding and marketing, elementary/secondary partnerships and promotion, facilities and resources, and developing a customer service mindset across the system. So what I would say in summary, that the work before us really is to continue to enhance and improve our programs and our student experiences. We have a lot of great offerings and lots of good things happening for kids, but as we know, we also have work to do. And I think the fact that we're really focused on differentiating the experience for each student and addressing disproportionate outcomes serves us well, even in this work as we move forward. We also need to dispel some misconceptions that exist about schools in the Halton region, and just do a great job of telling all of our stories. You know, we have some stories that are not the best stories, but we also do have some very good stories to tell about the Halton District School Board and the experience that our students have. And with that, I will take any questions.
Do we have any questions regarding this report? Trustee Amos?
Thank you, through you. I am absolutely thrilled to see this report. About five or six years ago, a number of us were on a committee who did something similar, and COVID got in the way. And so I'm really glad to see that this report is coming forward and has picked up and gone beyond some of the ideas from that report, which is amazing. So one of the, one of the things in feedback from families is just when they go to look at a school, how it looks. And I had started going around and taking pictures of each school, and I had said, we should just put them all up on a wall, look at them. And I know that was never done, because I was told staff would do it. Eventually, they told me to stop. So I challenge you to go around each school and take a picture of the front, and then put them all up on the wall, and just see how welcoming they look. And you're going to see some that are very welcoming, and some that aren't. And that's what we need to do. That's the first impression any family gets of a school, and some simple things can be done. And while I know we're limited in dollars, we can probably do things economically. And I mean, to me, that's a great first step. The other, the other thing to be aware of is the, our co-terminus board does do some recruitment through sport teams and things like that. So we have to be a lot more proactive about trying to keep the students in our schools and make them aware of the programs that we actually have that they could take, they can access as well. So, thank you.
Through the chair, thank you, Trustee Amos, for your feedback. Thank you, and we will move on to trustee Bryden.
Thank you. I noticed in the report that the retention rate in Milton is significantly lower than, than those in the other municipalities. And I know, within the last three years, our co-terminus board has opened two high schools in Milton, and that may be changing dynamics there. But I'm curious if there are specific actions that we want to take that are targeted at Milton in ensuring that, that people there have the greatest confidence in, in our secondary schools particularly.
Thank you for the question. Through the chair to you, trustee Bryden. We have, we also have data to share with each one of our schools. So part of the work is that working with each of our schools to develop a plan. So our schools in Milton might look a little different from the strategies we have here. They're also making school-specific plans, how they can embrace their community and bring their community in. So that is part of the work, and we'll be looking at Milton with that data in mind, in terms of helping and supporting them.
Thank you. Moving now to trustee Zheng.
Hey, thank you. I just have some comments. This is a very good report, and it is, it gives a very clear direction and it shows us where we can improve. The report has, tells the background why we need this survey, and how we conduct a survey, and who are the member of the committee. And a very important thing in this report and finding, and I don't want to address what is funded, and I just want to say, in the filing, it, it put all the feedback into two groups. One is parent group, the other one is the student group. We can see the difference between these two groups, because they, they are the customers we are serving. And students, actually, they are not adult, and they are, they have, we directly serve the students, they have direct experience. And, but they, they don't have any experience in the real world and to, to see outside of the school. And for parents, they have more experience, and they are, they know the expectations from the school board. And so we can see the difference, and we can balance how to serve them better. So I, I believe this is a very good report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now moving to trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. I was interested to see the financial impact of this report, where it lists that action items are funded through existing operating budgets, because I think that there's potential here to really turn more money into some schools. And here's my thinking. Really important to some of the students is the, is the athletic programs. And I know up in the hills, at least one school is very challenged when it comes to busing anywhere for the athletic programs. And it, and it makes it almost very difficult, if not impossible, or they have to fundraise, or so on and so forth. So I see that the financial impact, if, if we start to look at how schools can be supported, and how the volunteer teachers and coaches within our schools can be supported more along the lines of something that's very important to students, is that athletic programs, a breadth and depth, and numbers of teams available, that we might be having to pour some more money into this. And I just wonder if that too could be, is that going to be covered in what's listed here as the existing operating budget, or any other expenses that we see might need to be incurred in order to help support our study here?
So if I may, I'm looking over to Superintendent Nagoy, who's looking to respond.
Thank you. And that's a great, that's a great question. We always look at our budgets in terms of reallocating to priorities. So we do have that flexibility in here. We do have some dedicated staffing and resources that were mentioned in this report, which are part of the budget that we've put forward for the year. And outside of that, through the operating budgets, through the capital budget, it's about reallocating it and prioritizing it based on the focus that we want to take, the projects that we want to undertake, and so forth. Now, it's a balancing act, because there are, you know, repairs, maintenance, emergencies, things like that, that would take precedent over certain things. But that, that's how we would look at funding and supporting these initiatives. And they may be different from the, different municipalities, different schools, based on the interest and the need.
Does that satisfy your question?
Yes, could I have a follow-up?
Yes, you may.
Just a follow-up. I know it has been the experience, and I'm very interested in this experience that happens in the hills, where some students choose to leave a school to go to the co-terminus board, and then the very next year return to our board, because they really appreciate and understand the significance, and, and I guess all of the extra things that our board can offer, and the experience that they'll get. Are we tracking any of the rebounders?
Through the chair to you, trustee Gray. We haven't been tracking the rebounders. That might be something that folks continuing the work look at next year. And I'm looking over to Superintendent Connor, who's done much of this work with me.
Sure, if I might jump in. So through the chair. So we do have some sense of what that looks like. I will say proportionally very minimal in terms of what that floatback looks like, just anecdotally amongst schools, in terms of being able to manage out of area transfers from grade 10 onwards. We do know that students between eight and nine generally leave in much greater numbers to the co-terminus board than they come into our board. So that's a key time in terms of transition for students. And what I would say is, we know fairly holistically that most students, once they land in a high school, typically, there isn't a great deal of transience to and fro. A handful of students, but not a proportionally large number of students. So we'll continue to review and consider. But most critically, we see that transition scape between grade eight and grade nine as really a, a time in which families and students are making choices. And I would say, by and large, most students then remain in that school for their high school career.
Does that satisfy your question? Thank you. Moving on now to trustee Horn.
Thank you, and my question is quick. So I know a lot of this has been talking around or focusing, or what I've heard, a lot of the Milton schools. But I'm wondering, do we know which areas our retention is lacking? So do we know, is it Burlington, is it Oakville, is it Milton, is it, where is it? Are there particular pockets, or is it everywhere?
Through the chair to trustee Horn. Milton would be the greatest area, but within each other area, we do have certain schools that have lower retention rates as well. And so that might, the individual planning for each school is really important, because if we say Burlington isn't a problem, there are schools within Burlington that do have, have an issue.
And a quick follow-up on that. So with that, with those different pockets, you speak about that, sort of that individualized approach, because there's usually a reason behind retention at different pockets. So I'm wondering how we, again, I don't know how to say this in a way that makes sense. Again, some places are proximity, others are reputation of the school, others are the newness of the school. So are we looking at why, the, the different whys in the different areas, and addressing those specifically, as you spoke of in those individual approaches?
Yes, we're asking schools to do that, because we, we have that information available to them for their particular student population, so they can take that data and then start developing those plans based on their unique, the responses of their students.
Thank you. And our last speaker, second time speaker, trustee Amos.
Thank you, through you. First, I'm thrilled to see the focus on the elementary/secondary partnerships and promotion, because I think that's key. If, if you can get the kids in about grade five or six, starting to buy into where the school is they're going to go, if you can't leave it till seven and eight, because by then, parents have already made up their mind. And if the kids already have some kind of partnership with the high school, and things are happening, and they like it, then they're going to say to the parents, that's what we need to do. My other point is, and I don't know if he was considered, because I didn't see it here, is when you're doing the partnerships and educating piece, realtors are really important. They have a really huge bias on where they say are good schools. And they use the Fraser Report a lot. So we need to educate those real estate agents about the schools in the area, because they will just go by numbers and say, oh, you should be buying by that school. Don't go there, because that's not a good school. So that's huge for a lot of parents moving into an area. So that's something that needs to be looked at.
Thank you. And if I can just comment, I, I will, will note that. And I will say that I agree with you. We need to start early. We really want our kindergarten students coming in thinking that, you know, the HDSP is their, their home, and, and their, their place where they're going to experience all of their years. And that's what the committee is looking to work towards.
Thank you. And that does exhaust our speakers list, but I just wanted to make a, a small comment. This is Superintendent, Associate Director Salmini's final report to the board before she retires. And now she's not retiring until the summer, but she won't be having a report coming to our special board meeting next week. And I just wanted to say thank you for bringing such a positive, uplifting report on a difficult topic to our board as you leave, because it sets the table for many years of success to come in attracting and retaining students. And that's just the perfect note to leave on for you, I think. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the comments. And truly, you know, it is a good report to leave on, because I am so very proud of the Halton District School Board, and the staff, and the students, and, and what we do here. So I, I was privileged to be able to bring this as my last report. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we move on to 6.2, the director's report.
Thank you, Chair Collard. We begin this evening with a memoriam. It is with profound sadness that we share that Terry McKay, Senior Administrative Assistant at Escarpment View Public School, recently passed away during her time with the HDSP. Terry was a beloved member of the Captain R. Wilson Public School in Escarpment View Communities, where she established deep connections and lasting friendships. Our thoughts are with Terry's family and friends and the school communities. And while the next item, the next person I mentioned is not a memoriam, it is our thoughts and prayers are going to be with Prajin and, and Ben Danan, who is missing from CK, and has been missing for over a week. And so I ask that, as we reflect and on, on Terry, that we also add a prayer for, for Prajin. This pause. Thank you. Our HDSP students, of course, continue to excel in many ways at the first Ontario Provincial Championships. Our students from our Shizam program at Gart Webb Secondary School performed exceptionally well at the first Ontario Provincial Championships, placing second in the technology division and third overall, earning five gracious professionalism awards, which celebrate exceptional acts of respect and kindness through collaborative problem-solving and direct competitors. Adam Faviano, grade 11 student at Oakville Trafalgar High School, also received recognition at the event. Adam was named a first Dean's List finalist, which are outstanding, passionate student leaders who demonstrate exemplary effectiveness at attaining first ideals. Adam was nominated by his team for his direct contributions and impact on others, exemplifying leadership and commitment on the team and on his community. To the Georgetown District High School Swim Team reunion, the Georgetown District High School Swim Team celebrates its 50th anniversary by hosting a reunion on June the 9th that brought together alumni from the founding 1974 team true to the current swimmers. The event honored a legacy of inclusion and competitive excellence, marked by numerous officer championship wins, and acknowledged the dedication of both past and present team members, coaches, and staff who have sustained this storied program for half a century. And in fact, I was at Georgetown just a couple weeks ago, and I believe they have current Olympian in their school. They are just a, quite a tremendous achievement in terms of their swim reputation. HDSP students shine at the 2025 Canada Wide Science Fair in Frederickson New Brunswick. Students from HDSP receive outstanding success at the 2025 Canada Wide Science Fair, Canada's largest annual youth STEM event. For more than 60 years in the Canada Wide Science Fair, has united young thinkers from across Canada to present their research and innovations, compete for prestigious awards, and engage with like-minded peers who are passionate about discovery and innovation. This year, 11 students from HDSP elementary and secondary schools earned 40, that's four zero, awards from a wide range of categories recognized in excellence in innovation and research. These accomplishments reflect the HDSP's strong commitment to advance in excellence in STEM education. It is with pleasure that I announce that Brent Coquill was, is the new incoming superintendent of education. Brent is a system principal of safe schools for the HDSP, and has been selected as the incoming superintendent of education following the hiring process that took place in May. Brent enters the role with extensive leadership experience in the education sector, having served both school and board levels. His strategic guidance and collaborative approach has been and will continue to be instrumental in advancing student success and wellbeing, and in creating safe, inclusive, and welcoming learning environments. Congratulations, Brent. Congratulations, Brent. Also want to offer congratulations to Tina Salmini, our Associate Director, on her retirement. At this time, Tina has dedicated 33 distinguished years to education and the past 19 years with the HDSB. While we are truly thrilled for her as she embarks on this wonderful new chapter of her life, I know I speak for everyone here when I say that her passion and her leadership will be greatly missed. Tina's leadership has left a deep and lasting mark on the HDSB, and she leads with heart, always kind, always humble, always full of integrity. She brings people together, listens with care, and lifts others up. Her work on the multi-year strategic plan and her contribution to our new commitment around kindness, connection, and community will be a lasting legacy. We wish Tina all the very best in her retirement and express our heartfelt gratitude for her guidance, her friendship, her support, and her care and commitment to HDSB students, staff, and families. Congratulations, Tina.
Well, now move on to six point three, communications from the chair. And... Oh, I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. No, thank you. I just wanted to thank you for your kind words, Director Ennis, and just thank everyone in the room and just really all the people that I've encountered in my career, whether that be, you know, right at the beginning on school staffs, in the program department, various senior teams, the trustees, and the students, the students and the families. They've been the greatest PD for me, I would say, through the years. That's how we as educators learn the most. So just grateful for the people and I wish everyone all the very best as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So now we will move on to trustee connections to the MYSP. As you know, each month I've been highlighting one of the commitments of our multi-year strategic plan. It ties to the Education Act and how the work of trustees supports it. We only have one commitment left that I haven't spoken about, so this month I would like to highlight human rights, equity, and inclusion. Section 0.1 of the Education Act specifies the purpose of education as follows. "A strong public education system is the foundation of a prosperous, caring, and civil society. The purpose of education is to provide students with the opportunity to realize their potential and develop into highly skilled, knowledgeable, caring citizens who contribute to their society." Under section 229.1, school boards are required to develop and implement an equity and inclusive education policy. Policies fall under the purview of trustees and must be approved by the Board of Trustees. As per section 169.1, every board shall promote a positive school climate that is inclusive and accepting of all pupils, including pupils of any race, ancestry, place of origin, color, ethnic origin, citizenship, creed, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, age, marital status, family status, or disability. This is clearly reflected in the HDSB equity and inclusive education policy that has been approved by this board. Tonight, we have received a report on hate and discrimination and the actions being taken by staff to ensure all forms of hate and discrimination in our schools are being appropriately addressed. Trustees around this table support the work being done by staff. We stand united for the ideals of human rights, equity, and inclusion. Trustees also have responsibility for approving the annual budget under section 232.3 of the Education Act, and we will be doing so next week. The budget must be aligned with the goals and priorities of a multi-year strategic plan. Our commitment to human rights, equity, and inclusion must be reflected in our board's budget. And that is all I have in my comments this evening. So we will move on to committee updates. Moving into the parent involvement committee. Trustee Zhang, are you prepared to give us a summary of the last month in the parent involvement committee?
There was no update since last board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe there will probably not be an update in the Special Education Advisory Committee either, but I will ask trustees Ahmed, Oliver, Sheng, was there anything since the last board meeting?
Oh, again to the update.
Okay.
Since last board meeting, we had the CAC meeting after the last board meeting. And in that meeting, the committee reviewed and discussed the new specification plan and all in favor.
Thank you very much. And now we will move to the accessibility committee. Trustee Baxter, I believe, has left the meeting. So we will move on to environmental leadership and sustainability and trustee Rocha.
Through you, Chair. So the last meeting of the LSE committee was a few weeks back. And normally we do meet virtually because we're environmentally friendly, but we made an exception in that we met in person at Post Corners School to learn about their journey to becoming a sustainable future school. So the presentation included everything the school has done to incorporate environmentalism into their curriculum, starting as early as Kandy. We did a tour of the school. And we also did a tour of their outdoor garden. So there's a huge environmental push in that school. And there's a lot of excitement in the air. So and I think the environment as a whole is a fun topic to talk about because it's one where we shine, as seen in all the awards we won. We, like I did anything, like we won in New Brunswick at the competition that Director Ennis just briefly messaged, talked about earlier this evening. And what's also important is students today have a really deep understanding for SDGs, even in kindergarten. And you can tell from their boards, they understand it. So, you know, I only learned about SDGs as an adult and I'm still learning. So it's great to see that four-year-olds are getting it. So there's a lot of excitement there. And what's great is that other schools are looking to Post Corners for tips and how to expand the program to their schools. And then we were also visited by the town of Oakville and their promotion of the Bike to Bike to School Week. So a lot more is being planned throughout, at least Oakville, to encourage students to bike or walk to school safely. So that was the last meeting of the year, and then we will return in the fall.
Thank you very much for that report. The next one on our list is the Human Rights Equity Advisory Committee, trustee Ahmed.
Thank you, Chair. The last meeting of the year was on 27th May. Since the last board meeting, we haven't had any other meetings. So that's the update.
Thank you very much. And the last one is the Mental Health Strategy Advisory Committee, Vice Chair Oliver.
I do not have an update. The committee will be resuming in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm looking for an OPSA update from trustees Gray and Daniele. I know we just had a wonderful conference last weekend. So please let us know what we need to know from that conference.
The one thing about I would point out, a message had gone out regarding the Healthy Democracy Leadership Scholarship that OPSA produces in association with the Associated Municipalities of Ontario. I had requested a volunteer from each board to review the applications and take part in probably about a one-hour meeting to determine a scholarship winner. And I do not yet have a volunteer from Halton. So nobody meets my eyes now. I noticed that. I just saw everyone looked down.
[laughter]
Pardon me?
I know you have done it numerous years.
So if anyone is able to, I know it is a very busy time. Yeah. Thank you very much, Chair Collard. I appreciate that.
And I would just add that through the meeting, I was able to send a summary of that that happened at the annual general meeting. And also that I picked up, I've got three copies left of the annual report of OPSA. And if anybody wants one of these printed copies, you're welcome to have them. I'll leave them right here. Thank you.
It is also available electronically if anyone prefers.
Thank you. And now do we have any trustee questions of clarification? I have to scroll down and see if there's anyone buzzing in on my system. And there is no one. So now we will move on to trustee news.
Thank you very much. As this is nearing the end, I know we do have a meeting next week, but this is pretty much the end of the year. And it's usually something that I do every year at this point. And that is, is that I just take a moment to give a shout out to our teachers and volunteers who voluntarily work with our students in extracurricular activities, to provide them with amazing experiences and opportunities to learn and grow, thereby advancing their connection to school and to their community. Each and every day, these volunteers make a difference in the lives of our students. And for that, we are all very, very grateful. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and give a shout out to all those teachers out there and those community volunteers that help make that great difference in the lives of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a question from trustee Amos.
It's not really a question.
Okay.
Seeing as this is probably my last in-person board meeting, I'd like to say something. Is that okay? And I will try and hold it together. Twenty-five years ago last month, I saw an ad in the Oakville Beaver, looking for a person to work with the Halton District School Board as a school board trustee. I had been looking for a part-time job as both my children were now in school. The only qualifications mentioned were that you must be a Canadian citizen, at least 18 years of age, a resident of the board's jurisdiction, and eligible to vote in the school board election. Well, I thought, well, that's a snap because I can do that. I thought, since I fit all those criteria, and I would definitely something I'm interested in, I went and spoke to my children's teachers who taught kindergarten in grade three, and asked about issues that were important in the school board and what was important in the province. I can still remember that interview. I was so nervous. It was in the director's conference room. I was at one end and it seemed like there were 20 people at the other end. It was probably only the 11 current trustees, but it felt like a whole crowd. A day later, Ethel Gardner, the chair of the board at the time, called me and told me I was a successful candidate and that the position would start in September as the Board of Trustees didn't operate over the summer. I was so excited, but little did I know what I was getting myself into. While I did vote, I hadn't really paid attention to the actual role of the trustee. I wasn't exactly sure what they were responsible for. But I learned and I learned really quick. I found out I was filling the position of an elected trustee who had moved out of the area from my own area. At the first meeting I attended, I was sworn in and then listened to delegations regarding a potential closing of a school in Burlington. I found it very quickly that I was expected to vote on that, whether to close that school at the next meeting. So I went, wow, I got a lot of catching up to do and had to do a lot of research before I could make that decision. It was a bit overwhelming and a very steep learning curve. But come that next meeting, I felt comfortable to vote and that school was closed. At that time, I had no idea what I would be involved in closing a fair number of schools as well as opening others, or the fact that 25 years later, I would still be involved in the Halton District School Board and all that would entail. So then I had to make the decision to run an election to be able to continue the job. I had no clue what was involved in running an election and very limited funds to be able to run. But I got really lucky because I got acclaimed in that election. So back to the board I went. As you can probably imagine, things were very much different back in 2000 in many ways. For one thing, it was a totally different boardroom. There was actually a pit in the middle down there. And that's where the recording secretary was. And shortly after I joined, we were moved to MM Robinson High School to hold our meetings while a new boardroom was being built. Other than some different configurations of these desks, it's the same boardroom now. Not quite the same chairs, but almost. We didn't have the technology that we have now. Yes, we got computers, but they were only used at home. We used paper agendas. And I can remember asking if we could use a Palm Pilot to keep our calendars on and some notes. And I was told, no, paper is good enough. It was a number of years before we received cell phones. And so we had phone lines at home, but no cell phones unless you had a personal one. So a few years later, we did receive those cell phones and we got computers that you were able to carry and use in the boardroom as well as everything else. But everything else was on paper. I can remember thinking, how long do I need to keep all these board packages and all this other information as I filed it away? It wasn't until the advent of COVID when that we stopped actually receiving those hard copies of the board package which were delivered to our homes. In the first few years of being a trustee, I was often called Switzerland, as I was always willing to listen to all sides and hear what everyone had to say, even if I didn't agree with it. In those first years of being a trustee, I learned very quickly that not everyone saw things the same way. And for some, it was not governance as we know it now. And some wanted much more control and basically wanted to make decisions that trustees should not be responsible for. This led to some very tough times, where I can actually remember not sleeping or actually crying when I got home because of some of the actions that happened at the board. During that time, the director was fired by a group of trustees who had gotten together to make sure they had enough votes. It was a terrible time for our board. It certainly wasn't about doing what's best for students. These people also made it difficult for some superintendents that they didn't agree with or like. So they would make them try and quit or retire. It was a very dark period for our board, in my opinion, and we have come a long way since then. There were many times I wondered about whether I should continue as a trustee because I didn't feel I could do anything to make a difference for the students. But because of many wonderful superintendents, principals, teachers, and other staff, and their kind words of support, I did stay and kept trying. I did lose an election by about 50 votes in the mid 2000s because of this philosophy of taking over the board. I got out marketed by another trustee who had previously said they wouldn't run against me because I did a great job, but then decided I was in the way of them taking control of the board. Yes, I was upset, but I wasn't going away. I had already become involved in getting the parent involvement committee organized and was given the opportunity to chair this committee in its first two years to help get it on its feet. And I also stayed active in the schools my children were at by chairing the parent councils. At the next election, the community, which had been continuously telling me how much they miss me, voted me back on the board to continue to try and make a difference. Things were better when I came back as some of the people had changed, but our board had suffered reputationally for all the actions that had happened. I decided that I wanted to try and change that. So ran for chair and was successful and honored to have this support of my fellow trustees for the next four years, where we as a board changed things, including our reputation, and made HDSB a place where people wanted to be to work and learn. A foundation was laid where the chair is following, along with the rest of the trustees have continued to make the HDSB a great place to be. Over the last 25 years, I have worked with eight different boards, 47 different trustees, many of whom I call friends, five different directors and one acting director, all who were amazing people who have steered this board to become the amazing place it is, over 50 different superintendents, all who I have totally respected and learned from. So thank you so very much, over 100 different principals and vice principals who have made their schools awesome places of learning and taught me a lot, three amazing managers of the director's office. Three amazing managers of the director's office who made my job easier and are wonderful people. So many amazing teachers and staff at all levels that every day make a difference to the lives of the students and are also one of the reasons this board is the absolute best. Thirty-nine different student trustees, some of whom I'm still in contact with and have seen them married and having their own children. I hope I haven't left anyone out, but each and every one of these people, many who have become friends, including all the people here around this table, have influenced me to do my best, so thank you all. The Halton District School Board is the best board, not just in the province, but in Canada. It is evident not just in our test scores, but also in the success of the students who leave our system. I am one of those students. We have so much to brag about in the strength and breadth of our programs, our fantastic relationships we have with our unions, the supports we have in place for all staff, our wonderful new multi-year plan, which I know will keep this board on a journey that will continue to make things better and will keep the board focused on what is important. And I'm so happy I was a part of creating it. There have definitely been ups and downs in my journey here at the board. I've mentioned some of the downs, but there also have been some very exciting times where we changed the kindergarten model to from half-days to full-day alternate days and then to full-days. We eliminated grade thirteen to end in grade twelve. The focus was changed to look at students from K to 21. And we've been able to do so much more for our students with special needs. While I've been a part of closing a number of schools, all for the right reasons to make sure all the students get the best education they can, I've also been a part of building many others, including five in my own area. And two more with the groundbreaking which just happened for the new Oakville Northeast High School, which I had been advocating for for at least fifteen years or more. And another public school soon to be built, Ward Seven. I am proud to have brought the motion, and it's only in mind because it happened tonight, that inspired the Inspire Awards and many other motions which I have hoped have made this board a better place. I also have a wish list, which I'm asking this board to continue to advocate for. I have been trying for over twenty years to have high schools start later to enable those students to learn better. There's so much research that proves that this is true, which I am more than willing to share with whoever wants to read it. And Superintendent Nagoy has already promised he will call me when it happens. I have tried to reintroduce Home Ec or Family Studies, as it's called now, and SHOP, or Tech as it's called now, brought back in elementary schools, specifically grade seven and eight, to allow all students exposure to these very important types of skills. I really hope that the curriculum changes the provincial government is implementing around this will be successful and will allow all students a chance to learn some of these very valuable skills. Last, but definitely not least, I have been advocating for over twenty years for funding to actually equal the actual cost to educate our students. I am proud of our board and hope the Financial Advocacy Committee will continue to try and educate the community and work with OPSA in the province to try and make that happen. I have to tell you that being a school board trustee has been one of the most fulfilling jobs I can imagine. It's also not for the fainter heart or for the money. When I started as a trustee, we only made $5,000 a year. And while now we make over three times that, it certainly isn't a living wage or actually remuneration for the number of hours we spend. While we don't have a direct impact on the classroom and students the way the teacher does, the decisions we make here at this board table do affect each student and staff in the system. To me, being a trustee is not about politics, and this is an argument I have had with many people. Yes, it's an elected position, which makes it a very tough way to try and keep a job. It is also, it is almost like a popularity contest where even people you don't know really know what you're doing, but they're giving you a job review and you hope you've done a good enough job to keep that position. Just as a piece of history, school board trustees are the oldest form of elected representatives in Ontario. Since 1807, generations of community-minded citizens have made decisions on behalf of locally publicly funded schools building the foundation of the system we have today. Despite this longevity and contribution, the trustee role is widely underappreciated and misunderstood, and I'm sure my fellow trustees will agree with me. And I fear with the moves being made by the current government, the trustee position is being undermined even more. To me, being a trustee is all about making a difference for the kids. Games and politics should not be a part of that. Each and every decision I have ever made has always kept the students in the center. I have tried to make a difference and hope I have. I'd like to thank my children, Nicole and Taylor, for their support. At times, they were embarrassed when I came in the school, when they were there, sometimes dressed up as a school mascot to support the school or bringing in the director and some superintendents dressed up in costumes such as balloons to look like grapes or like Olympic athletes or hula dancers. But they always, but I know that they were proud of me because of I tried to make a difference. And even though they knew it wouldn't be in time for them to benefit from it as they would be done at school. And even more importantly, I'd like to thank my husband Ian for supporting me throughout this journey, despite the nights alone, having to feed the children and get them to their activities while I was in meetings. He is always there for me in the good times and bad. And I'm sure there were times he was tired of hearing about all the goings on. My family was part of this journey as well as one of the reasons I did it. Who would have thought that twenty-five years ago, when I applied for the trustee position, the journey I would take, all in the effort to make a difference for all the kids. So yes, I'm sad I'm leaving, but I know this board is in a good place and know that people here will continue to make a difference. I hope you'll invite me back to celebrate some of, some of the good things that are going to be happening. And I know, and you know I'm around if you ever need some history or background. But I will be watching. So I'd like to thank all of you for your support of me and for all you do for kids. So thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. Okay, so how do I follow that? I just, I wrote down a few notes as you were speaking. And I just wanted to say, being acclaimed has nothing to do with luck. Being acclaimed means you did your job well enough that no one wanted to run against you. So think about it that way. And I was acclaimed three times, so I have no opinion really on that. I remember the days of paper. And I remember asking Gail, can you please just send it to me electronically? And finally got her to do that. But, but it was still a choice. And, and a lot of trustees chose to have it delivered. And I'm really grateful that we don't do that anymore. As for Switzerland, it's on my bucket list. And I intend to make sure I get there. And I remember being on PIC with you that very first year and planning the very first PIC conference. And look at what we've now, over twenty years late. Well, yes, twenty years later. Twenty years later, still having a PIC conference. And thank you for chairing our board so capably. You and I have not always seemed eye to eye, but I do appreciate a lot of the changes that you brought, including the Inspire Awards. I remember you wanting that fervently. We didn't have a name for it yet, but I remember you wanting that fervently and working with trustee L. Harrison. And I believe trustee Gerbentz. Reynolds, yeah, trustee Reynolds on that. And, and bringing that motion to the board and, and bringing forth the, the birth of the Inspire Awards, which has really been a fantastic thing for our board. And I also know that you're an alumnus of Nelson High School. And so, you know, Burlington roots. I know you moved to Oakville, but you have Burlington roots. So, you know, I'm going to celebrate that. I also want to thank you very much for all your work on financial advocacy and, and fair funding for our board and for boards across the province because public education costs more than what we're given. And, and every year, we're being asked to make cuts that we can't afford to make. And, and eventually, we're going to find ourselves in a position where we're not seeing the kind of achievement and the kind of, and I'm not just talking about academic achievement. I mean, that well-being, that centeredness, that balance that our students have, we're going to see that get eroded. And, and we will continue to work on this. You know we will. So in closing, I just want to say thank you much, very much, for the twenty-five years you've given to this board. I know the remuneration doesn't make it easy. But I also know that, that what we do here matters and what you've done here has mattered. And so thank you very much for everything that you've done. And we have a little something that we'd like to give you on behalf of the trustees. We also have something for you, Tina. And now that brings us to the end of trustee news. So I will be asking for a motion to move into private session. And if I can just get down to my notes, trustee Daniele, would you move a motion to go into committee of the whole private session respecting property, security, litigation, and negotiation matters? This meeting is not open to the public pursuant to Education Act 2072. Thank you. And trustee Bryden, would you second this motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any objections to moving into private session? Seeing none, the motion is passed by unanimous consent, and we are now in private session. Vice Chair Oliver, the floor is yours. Thank you very much. And...
Okay, welcome back everyone to the resumption of our public session. Vice Chair Oliver, do we have any business from private session that requires approval?
We do, we have three items.
Thank you.
Okay. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the resolution from the Halton District School Board Committee of the whole private session June 17, 2025, respecting property matters, part one, report 25081, private session agenda item 4.1, and I so move.
Trustee Amos, would you second this motion?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Is there any debate? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
In favor, please.
Oh, I guess we're, yes, we have an item for this if you want to use your thing. Okay. Okay, everybody packed up. It came up for me, but that's okay. If you put your hand up, then you voted for it. Excellent. Next.
I voted yes online.
Thank you, Margot. Thank you.
Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the resolution from the Halton District School Board Committee of the whole private session, June 17, 2025, respecting property matters, part two, report 25081, private session agenda item 4.1, and I so move.
Trustee Gray, would you second this motion?
Yes, I would.
Is there any debate? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
In favor.
Show of hands. This new show of hands and those online, yeah, all in favor.
In favor.
Okay. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the resolution from the Halton District School Board Committee of the whole private session, June 17, 2025, respecting personnel matters, report 25082, private session agenda item 4.2, and I so move.
Trustee Amos, would you second this motion?
I'd be very happy to.
Is there any debate? Please cast your votes. By hand.
In favor.
In favor, please. In favor.
Thank you, that sounded unanimous to me.
And finally, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the resolution from the Halton District School Board Committee of the whole private session, June 17, 2025, respecting personnel matters and negotiations, report 25083, private session agenda item 4.3, and I so move.
Trustee Daniele, would you second this motion?
With great pleasure.
Is there... Seeing none, please cast your votes by show of hands.
In favor.
In favor, please. In favor.
I didn't hear anyone opposed, so I believe that passed unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. We have now reached section 7.0, adjournment. Trustee Amos, would you please make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I will.
Trustee Gray, will you second this motion?
Always happy to.
Are there any objections to approving this motion?
I object.
You guys are too funny. Ah, seeing none, we are adjourned by unanimous consent. Thank you very much.